Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Moving on to roll call. Anthony?
Signing sheet is one of the little chicken heads that I get, right?
You can do it from that side. Anthony, does this support agenda settle? Do we need to take them?
Hugo Pacheco?
Here.
Tom Williams?
Here.
Augie Rodriguez? Cynthia Sandoval?
Here.
Manu Chacon?
Here.
Troy Carver Hall?
Here.
Anthony Manzano? Here. Victor Ayala? Yoli Garcia? Jennifer Markovich?
Here.
Michelle Corzantes?
Here.
Angela Duarte? Marlene Fonseca? We have nine members present.
We have four. Present, we do have four for a special meeting of the general board. Today's Monday, March 14th. It's 6:20 PM and this meeting's officially called to order. Over there? We'll go ahead and move on to item number four, general public comment. Two minutes for anyone who has a public comment. Mr. Cabrera?
No.
No?
No.
Mr. Johnson? Okay, moving on to item... Five.
I do.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot.
I'm just a few proper now.
Hold on, let me get my timer out.
It's 6:20, right?
Correct.
The clock says 6:20.
Hold on. Okay, you have two minutes.
Okay, I don't know if I can say what I'm gonna say. I don't know if I'm in the agenda or not because of Phil Lee, the vacancy. I don't know if he'll even get to that.
Hold on. I don't know what you're gonna say. It is on the agenda to fill the vacancies. There's not an announcement of your removal. That was done via email.
Yeah, that's fine. Not a problem. Then I'd disregard my asking for time. Let him comment.
Okay, moving on to item five is the approval of minutes from the meeting of the general board held on February 3rd, 2016, and the special meeting of the board held on February 19th, 2016. Anthony, sentence a minute. Thank you for that, Anthony. Does everybody have a copy of your minutes already read up? So starting on February 3rd. Anybody?
I don't think I have any corrections.
I don't have any, no, I don't think.
I mean, there were a couple of typos.
Typos.
We understand, right?
Actually, since we haven't approved those minutes, can't we just change where it's appointed as a typo of minutes?
Well, we can't, that's what I was saying. We can't really change the minutes because that's exactly what happened. That's what was said and that's what he did. We'll just have to make an announcement at the next meeting. So do I have a motion to approve these minutes?
Our motion to approve the minutes for February, yes, February 3rd, 2016, general board meeting, and February 19th, 2016, special meeting.
So I have a motion to approve by Cynthia, seconded by Troy. Is there any objection to approving these minutes with the minutes? Any objection? Any objection?
In black on black.
Jennifer and Hugo are abstaining. Is it, are you abstaining from this minutes?
I do.
Is everybody else in favor? Okay, everyone else is in favor.
What's the count?
The count is, how many are we now? Three abstentions for 10. Seven, zero, three.
10. So that would be seven, seven, three.
Motion passes to approve minutes of February 3rd, 2016. And now we're taking a look at the minutes for the special meeting held on February 19th, 2016. I did have one correction on here. I had a couple. On page one, Anthony?
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, four sentences up from the bottom.
Okay, I'm gonna make a correction right on the document, right? This is the special meeting?
Yeah.
January 11th?
Yeah, no, February 19th.
Okay. All right, did you want me to make a correction?
Four sentences up from the bottom. It says, "Marlene is suggesting that a director is impartial," I should not hear. It's not impartial. That's what I suggested.
He is not impartial. Okay, that's added. Or should I just write, "He is partial," rather than not impartial?
Either one.
He is partial, okay. I'll just take away him. He is partial.
Either one.
Anything else?
Yeah, she's essentially, in the second, she's not.
Halfway through second page, Marlene, is posting the agenda enough to inform the petitioner? You know what, I didn't watch the video, but I don't think I brought that concern up. That was me. I said that I, the rest is right. I thought, I found it highly unlikely, but I never, I don't think that was me, but I guess so. Let me, um...
Did you want me to make any changes? It says, "Second page you mentioned." Does not include emails, no? No one?
Is Marlene is posting the agenda after?
Oh, okay, I see.
That wasn't me.
Is posting the agenda now to inform the petitioner?
That was, I know Victor brought that up. The rest is correct, yeah.
Well, we didn't even, we didn't even do it.
We did video.
So do you want me to make a change, a correction?
Let's hold on to that.
Okay.
I actually, I just want the record for this meeting to show that I wasn't invited to this special meeting.
You were.
I was not.
Okay.
It was because of, I was still establishing the email and I didn't get the, so I just want the minutes of this meeting to reflect that.
So do you...
Yeah, I'm not sure that I can say anything about a meeting that I should have been invited to.
Right. So... Do I have a motion to approve these minutes with corrections?
Okay, I'll motion to approve the meeting minutes of the special meeting for February 19th, 2016. And in my previous statement, I actually motioned for the two to be approved, so.
Second. All in favor of approving these minutes with corrections for February 19th, 2016? Raise your hand. Any abstentions? Are you abstaining?
No, I was supposed to approve.
Okay.
I was typing up.
Okay, so Anika and Hugo are abstaining, and Jen, sorry.
So the...
Any others you can, 003. Are you ready, Anthony?
I'm gonna put the date, it was 2/17.
February 19th. February 19th. What was your vote marking? Whatever, yes, the minutes. Did we get a final vote on that?
700. Yeah.
Okay, moving on to item six is filling of vacancies. The following vacancies will be filled in accordance with LA 32 NC bylaws, Article 5, Section 6. Today's the last day that we can fill vacancies. And is anybody here from West Region to fill a vacancy? At large community interest? Is that, both of you? Okay, let's, um, let's go ahead and have, have you both...
How much time do we have? Two minutes? Three? Five? It's usually three minutes. Three minutes. Three minutes to give us their background and what they've done and why they should do.
Any preference, who goes first? Are you gonna let Mr. Johnson go first? Okay. Sorry. Okay. Three minutes.
Time ready? Two minutes, okay. My name is Scott Johnson. I currently serve in the past two incarnations of this board as South Region and also represent him also a recording secretary. I also served on the land use committee of this board, deputy committee chairperson, and, and I've done my, my time here. I'm kind of, forgive me here, but I think we're over here. I just had another example of why we need to be more proactive here. We had a cab driver who was murdered last night down the street, right here on Worth Street, which parallels Valley. We really need to get proactive in working, immobilizing community to tackle an increased crime situation. I grew up in a Ramona Gardens area. I went to El Surino and I worked at Wilson High School. But what we've seen in the last few months in this community in terms of the deteriorating crime situation, not only among our community, but citywide, is a call for us to mobilize our community to make sure that we tackle this problem, but also make sure we get our fair share of resources from City Hall. And Anthony Manzano is well for mayor with the situation that happened up on his side of the neighborhood council area up in the Rose Hill area with the double murder, the two young ladies and the murder of a young man who was going to Coweska in LA, who was moving forward with his life that was tragic to get away from. We need to be proactive in getting our community involved to work on these issues. But there's other issues involved too. There's issues involving rampant development. I was at a meeting yesterday with the organizers of the Neighborhood Initiative, the Integrity, the Neighborhood Integrity Initiative, which is to stop rampant overdevelopment and to preserve the characters of our community. And so, and also too, there's also issues regarding open space. I was contacted about a story that a website is working on regarding Elephant Hill and why Elephant Hill is not serving the community in a capacity as a passive part which offers also programming for our youth. That's why I'm gonna get involved in the neighborhood council, because the neighborhood council listens to the community and serves the community. We are supposed to be networking with our various groups and then we're supposed to be interacting with the power to be to pass along the information that we gather from our constituents and our stakeholders. And that is why I would love to serve again on this body and to represent this body, because it's not about me, not about I, it's about we as a community. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. You also have three minutes.
You all know me. My name is Ruben Chavez. I'm a veteran in the police army, special forces, special ops, MAC-5, SOAT, you can put it in the computer and find out who they are. Anyway, I've been in this board many, many years and it's been contested, brought up to my attention by board members here and past board members, what am I doing here? Because I won't live here. When I first started, I was living in Lincoln Heights and started being in that neighborhood council, then Google brought me in, not this Google, the other Google. And I've been here ever since. I've been, what is it, about 10 years old? At least the guy who got me in, involved in this, whatever. And so, since I've been contested that I shouldn't be here, we went to Dunn, especially now that I'm, have filed for run again, it was brought up, I'm not eligible anymore. I've turned out. It's turned out legally, I should get elected this time. I still have three years to go, so I would serve one term and half on another if I was to run again, okay? This is, don't leave, you've got a big surprise look on your face. You're one of the ones that were contesting. Anyway, I can say what I say now because I'm running for this. This is an election thing and I can say whatever I want pertaining to my situation. Anyway, I'm a doer, I get things done, have a big mouth. Unfortunately, I'm out of order much of the time and I appreciate and thank all of you for putting up with me all these years. How much time do I have?
It's up to you. Yeah, two minutes.
Okay.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Okay, starting again with three minutes. I won't use it then.
No, you have 57 seconds.
Okay, this is about honesty and I would like to say about the gentleman that just spoke over here just a moment ago wanting this position, when he had Anthony's position, Jose Aguilar was a board member and he had petitions and then we used to sign them. He had the petition, none of us knew what it was, so we all signed it, thinking we were signing the attendance sheet, okay? I brought it up to his attention. He was that job at that time as a board member. I asked Jose Aguilar to retract that and not turn it in. He got paid for those. I asked him, I brought it to his attention at the time, he did nothing, but at that time, what he did do good, from then on, he put it on the computer like what Anthony does now. He got rid of signing it back then, okay? But still, that's the fact and honesty, and so I'm an honest man, okay? That's it. Thank you. I appreciate your vote. I hope you vote for me. If you don't vote for me, that's fine. I'm okay with it because I'm running for office and I hope I can beat him.
Okay, you're done. You're done. Thank you.
I vote for not done.
Um, I don't think we need to remove them. But let's say, what are you gonna say?
Remove from the...
No, from the room when we vote. How many say?
I can step outside if you want.
I don't think...
Step out with a problem.
Yeah, I don't think you need to step outside.
You're not voting for money.
So let's go ahead and take a vote. We're gonna go down, down the line and you, I'd like you to either say Mr. Johnson or Mr. Chavez who you'd like to be seated in the at-large community interest director position.
Hold on, this is item number...
Six.
Okay, the general item.
I have a reader. You want to announce it?
Announce it.
The, well, the...
Oh, yeah. Oh, we were just gonna go down the line.
Oh, okay.
Is it easier for you to record it?
Yeah, because the names are in the order that we're gonna...
Okay, we're gonna...
All the time. Hugo, just name them?
Yeah, please.
Are we gonna go down this way? I could put everybody's names...
Well, the way we have it on all of our board forms?
Or you wanna keep it that same way?
So go ahead and count it out.
Hugo Pacheco?
Scott.
So what's, I'm sorry, there you go. I was gonna say, just say the name, right? One or the other. Okay.
What was it? Scott Johnson. So it passed.
Tom Williams?
I'm Scott.
Cynthia Sandoval?
Mr. Chavez.
Manuel Chacon?
I press on this, Troy, can't even.
You want me to come back to you?
I come back.
Okay. Jerry Carver Hall?
Mr. Chavez.
Anthony Manzano?
Scott Johnson.
Michelle Corzantes? Scott Johnson. Angela Duarte?
Scott Johnson.
Marlene Fonseca?
Chavez.
Jennifer?
I'm Scott Johnson.
Mr. Chacon?
Scott Johnson.
Scott Johnson?
Yes.
Scott Johnson.
Eight for Scott Johnson?
Seven for Scott.
I'm sorry, seven for Scott Johnson and three for Ruben Chavez.
If it's obvious, it's a low brainer.
Thank you for all your service with us, Ruben, Mr. Chavez. We really appreciate it.
Well, if I can beat him in the election...
Mr. Johnson, please take your seat and welcome to LA 32, back to LA 32.
Thank you very much.
We got a minute to regret.
Seven three and seven...
Seven three.
He's voted for a...
Seven three.
I wrote it all down. And I come on, the board members know that I have to leave to do a radio call in about five more minutes and I will return about 7:20.
We're recording footage so you can hit it.
And I'll leave this up here because I'm coming back, but I just, I'm gonna just do that for the party.
We have a phone.
Okay, Angela, Lisa, we sound fine?
Yeah, we sound fine.
Okay. Okay, let's move on to item number seven. Mr. Johnson, have you, is your training up to date or is it expired?
I would imagine it has expired because now they're doing two years, so on fiscal issues, I will be, have to abstain, any fiscal issues.
Okay.
For money.
Are we still waiting for him if he's abstaining from the fiscal?
Yeah, because he's the seat of director.
Okay.
And what, he's putting the at mark for this.
Okay, item number seven is replacement of committee members and chairs/chairs. The following committee members/chiefs will be removed and reassigned. Ninety's chair, that's myself, I'm not able to hold any meetings for these last two months. And there are about two, at least two items that are up right now and need to be heard. Initially, Angela had volunteered about a month and a half ago.
Longer.
Two months ago?
Longer.
Point of order, ma'am, chairman. Chairman. Point of order. Since you have elections and Mr. Johnson's faculty got the seat, which I'm fine with, you still have another vacancy. Can I run for that vacancy? Because there's no one here from that place and you will not be able to fill this after today. You will not be able to fill that vacancy whatsoever. So since Mr. Johnson, and we've done this before, we jumped around and skipped around and all of that, you know, so...
Do you qualify for the West Region?
Anybody does. If there isn't someone living here, that lives there or someone that ran and didn't get elected, they have first choice for those seats, but no one's here. But I did run and I'm now a board member, so I'm eligible.
My understanding is when we've done that before, they qualify one way or another into that position.
When they, when they resign or left the board?
When they were like different regions, like they have, do you bang, do you remember?
When they were appointed?
Where is the West Region? We did that to you, right? Where is the West Region?
Right, that's what I'm asking, do you qualify in the West? That's like Wilson.
Anybody does. If you don't have someone that...
Not everybody, not anybody does.
If you don't have anybody on the election, the appointment's going on, that lives there, then it goes to somebody that ran and did not get elected.
Right, but you don't, you also don't fall into that category because you ran and you got elected.
Yeah, right. But I'm not, I'm not a board member now.
But then when you exhaust that, there's the option that anybody in the audience...
The storage, the storage that you have, is that Lincoln Heights or 32? Which one? He has a storage right on Mission and Broadway. No, it's Broadway, yeah, Broadway and Mission.
Right where Broadway ends, on Mission, that storage place, it's there.
Is that Lincoln Heights or is that else?
I think it's at Lincoln Heights.
I mean, neither, because I'm, we're Lincoln Heights, but we're not in 32.
I was looking at the boundaries over the weekend and I believe if you look at the, depending on the corner, if it's that, the northwest corner, okay, of Broadway and Mission, I believe that area goes up towards the ridge line incorporating from like Paradise Hill, everything to the east will fall into the zone. So P's on that corner and is that right next to the social security office?
Is that storage place, right where Broadway ends? Right where Broadway ends and you can go left or right. It's a T-type intersection and the storage is right there.
Clarification though, Mr. Johnson, hold on a minute. We already moved on from that section and this is why we're gonna spend three hours trying to get through an agenda.
Oh, we can't.
We've already finished it, we're already on number seven.
The petition, you don't want to vote for me.
I'm sorry, we're on, so we're discussing seven already. It's done, it's already...
It's a point of interest though because the appointments are going on and it's a legitimate point of interest.
Yeah.
No disrespect, Mr. Chavez, but if we're going back...
Yeah, I think maybe...
Because it's not one of the issues of a public comment, we already have the item we want to continue with.
No, yeah, I'm sorry, we can't. I don't hear what he's...
Well, because I didn't know that was gonna happen, any more than Mr. Johnson, you, what's gonna happen, okay?
In all fairness, you could have run for both. You could have, you could have said, "I'll run for both." We do have to end discussion, we moved on from that. I apologize, Mr. Chavez.
Actually, under reconsideration rules, anybody that voted in the affirmative can also bring it up as a reconsideration.
That's all what you're doing?
Are you doing that?
I would like to make that a reconsideration motion on my part to reconsider, only to give Mr. Chavez the opportunity to determine whether or not he is within our area, which I think he is, but I can't prove it.
My private thoughts...
Hold on, Ruben, so you gotta get a second. If you get a second, die. I'll second you. Okay, then it opens up.
I still think that it's not, not being done correctly because it was a motion in the first place, is it, with the nomination?
It's an item of reconsideration.
And you're reconsidering the entire item at number six.
That's right. I can do it this meeting or I could do it the next meeting.
Can you do it because you voted against him though?
The next meeting won't, will cannot fill a vacancy.
No, if I was a affirmative on the winning side, which is gonna...
Okay. So you're recon, you want, you're, you got a second here. Do we need to take a vote on the reconsideration?
Yes, you do.
To hear the reconsideration?
That's correct.
Okay. So right now on the table, we have a motion to reconsider item number seven and it's been seconded. We need to vote on whether or not we'll hear this reconsideration. Is there any public comment on this? Yes?
So you have the opportunity to reconsider this motion. That doesn't mean if you vote to hear it, it still doesn't mean that I'll be a board member because it seems there's going to be enough nays to start with. But at least I had the opportunity, as they say, I had my day in court. Okay, so I appreciate that you vote for the consideration. Like I said, there's, I think outstanding members here of this board that will probably not allow me to become a board member anyway, okay?
Okay, thank you. Any more comment?
I just want to make sure that he does qualify for the West Region and we're not in doubt.
Well, and for...
We think he is going outside to get the bylaws. We could look at...
Okay. We can't, we can't make that determination until we vote to reconsider it or not, otherwise there's not even any point. Is there any board comment on the reconsideration? Mr. Pacheco?
I've known Ruben for, like you said, longer than I know my wife.
No, I'm sorry though, we're just, we're just commenting on whether or not...
The reconsideration, the reconsideration.
Whether we're gonna reconsider.
That's right. Right? Boy, you had a shot there. She's a chair. She's a chair.
Are you gonna continue or...
I don't know, I don't know about where I was at.
You guys, somebody's talking, please.
And I like to be able to be fair. And one of the things that's important here is that we be fair, we give everybody an opportunity, a chance. Otherwise, we're, we don't, we're not full of integrity. And one thing that really went through my mind was the reason why I would pick Scott and over, over Ruin, right? And so, I want to give Ruben the opportunity like we've given everyone else the opportunity. And that's all I want to do. That's it. Thank you.
Is there any other bar comment on the reconsideration, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, I'm on a few months, you know, during the early incarnation, during the early days of this board incarnation, the community turning a petition asking that this board may return to its size of 21 members. We are at a point now where Mr. Chavez is there seeking a seat. For, for us who value community, you know, participation, but more importantly, who value the right of an individual to be able to espouse their opinion based upon the Constitution, Mr. Chavez has to, should be given a fair right to see, to see if he qualifies for that vacancy. That vacancy should be filled and if Mr. Chavez is eligible for it, it should be given fair consideration for that seat.
Let's take a vote on whether or not we're getting here the reconsideration of item number seven, all in favor, of item number six, I'm sorry. All in favor of hearing the reconsideration, raise your hand. Let's take a vote on whether or not we're getting here the reconsideration of item number seven, all in favor, of item number six, I'm sorry. All in favor of hearing the reconsideration, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Opposed? One. Abstained? Two. Seven-zero, seven-one-two. Motion passes. Anthony is not even eligible. Okay, can you, we're gonna reconsider hearing you, hearing you for west region. Can you explain how you qualify for the west region? And let's see the bylaws again.
Good evening.
You come in here in University Hill, you're part of the, you're part of my membership, or you're still part of University Hill. You wanna go for that, go for it.
How about, Ruben, you're, you're, you're with the Veterans Association, right?
Right.
And does that service every area of LA thirty-two?
All of it. And not only that, I'm in the bicentennial committee also, and that also serves all of LA thirty-two.
And that ends in the west region.
The west region, all of it, El Sarino, including part of nine-zero-zero-three-one, which is up on that hill, which is El Sarino, but it's District One.
Okay, let me read this. Stakeholders who live, work, own property or business who are members of a community organization or a public agency within the defined boundaries of the west region.
That's me.
You, so you're, you qualify through the veterans and through the bicentennial?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
My address for the veterans is the Jose Wizard's office because that's our base where we meet most of the time.
That's North Region.
Yes, and my other address is right here in El Sarino. I can't remember the name of the street where we are based for the LA thirty-two.
Or bicentennial?
Bicentennial.
Is it Jenny's address?
Yes.
Okay, that's east. But, but you, it covers that organization.
Those organizations cover all of the communities, all five communities that are on your agenda there, okay? All communities that are mentioned there, it covers that. So I qualify.
Well, I mean, I, I would, I would deem that that qualifies.
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
Well, it's an organization, yeah, so that, that's.
That's.
If you live, and you're an organization, you go to school, you go to worship.
Can I point something out?
Your business.
That because this is a filling of a vacancy, he doesn't have to be in the same region. If you look at page nine or bylaws.
That's what I was saying.
If there were someone from west, that person would get top priority, then he'd have runner-up from any other region, and then a stakeholder.
And that's what he qualifies, that's what I said.
Right, there, there's, there's some, yeah, there's been arguments about that.
That still doesn't mean I'm gonna get elected.
But either way, he qualifies through his organization. So let's go ahead and take a vote on whether or not we'll.
You have a hand over here.
Yeah, also it should be stated for the record that when Ruben ran initially for office, he ran as a factual stakeholder. A factual stakeholder is somebody who shows a long, a commitment, an attachment to the community, and also too, that person be able to, if a vacancy came up and they would be able to lateral, whatever term you wanna do, into a given region, because basically his qualification was very capsule-wide. I believe that there's members on this board that qualify the same way that Ruben did, which is kind of an enlarged because they, they encompassed their whole area. On the other hand, too, as we elected, because they might wanna have him on the board, I think it's, I think it's fair for him to come back, since we allowed some other folks to come back, even though they were absent too. I just hope that he realizes that Stephen's like, I'm gonna make sure certain people never come back, it's not the way to do things. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and take a vote on.
Can I say one more thing? Um, seeing as that this is, this is still up to us to fill his vacancy, I, I just wanna be, be very blunt about this and say, my experience in the past few months is that you're incredibly disruptive and disrespectful with this board. But I do think that to honor community involvement, we have to honor everyone's involvement. And lacking a better candidate, I will be voting in favor of you returning to the board. I would like to say that I would like to see you be more respectful towards the rest of the board.
Thank you. I will work on that.
Mr. Chukon?
I'd like to get me a comment on veterans, Reverend preference. He, he is disabled too. And on the bylaws, I see there's no, there's nothing in there for veterans are disabled. Like I have problems with disability too, and it's hard, that's why I'm not gonna run again, because it's hard to come up here. You miss two times and you're out. And that's not right. I, I'm disabled too. And I would go for him if he can't make it in here, if you just can't, you know, he wants to, he's a committee, he loves his committee. I would vote for him if he come back.
Okay.
And he's part of, of University Hill too, if he wants to come, University Hill being that area too, he's a kinda committee over there. As a director from the Peters group over there, I'd like to bring him in.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and take a vote because we, we really need to move on. Okay, everybody in favor of having Ruben appointed to the west region, raise your hand. Now, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Opposed? Tom, are you opposing?
Nope.
You're abstaining? Okay, so eight-one-one. Ruben, welcome back.
Take a seat. Just be nice.
Remember.
I'm gonna thank everybody for voting for me and I'm gonna, seriously, but you two board members.
Okay, please sit down, we have work to do, I'm sorry, I just.
You started being disruptive already.
Item number seven is replacement of committee members and chairs. Land use, I'm resigning as, as the chair of land use. I understand Angela doesn't wanna take it any more. You said that you've been land use. Would you like to chair? You have two months, you gotta do maybe one meeting.
Yes, I could do that.
Thank you so much, Josh. So I'm gonna go ahead and appoint Scott Johnson to, wait, do you know who your committee members are? Are you okay?
I believe one is Jorge and then.
Yvette.
And Yvette. Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and appoint Scott Johnson to chair of the land use committee. Is there any opposition to this? Okay, so Scott will be the new chair of land use. And then for arts and culture, we need to remove Daniel Cervantes. He, he's not responding to any emails and only came to one meeting. He's been notified. And we'd like to replace a member with Cynthia Sandoval. Is there any opposition to this?
Just a point of clarification. He's a stakeholder.
Who, Daniel?
That's what it says here.
Yes, he's a stakeholder.
Is, are we replacing a stakeholder, replacing another person if you can hear?
Well.
How many people, how many members of the committee are?
A committee has three members. You could have up to three directors on a committee.
I thought it was two directors and one stakeholder at least.
No. You could have up to three directors on a committee.
The chair and two other directors.
I mean, you.
I'm asking, I'm.
Yes, you need to.
You mean, you need to make the ruling, I was just asking.
It's in the bylaws. It's in the bylaws. I mean, we prefer to have a stakeholder because obviously we wanna stand out, but in this case, we have the kite fest coming and we need somebody reliable, and the stakeholder, again, didn't work out. And Cynthia is available and has some time right now to help us out, and so we'd like to welcome her to the committee. Any opposition to this? Okay, thank you.
What position are you putting her in?
Arts and Culture Committee. So Cynthia Sandoval will be the new member. Moving on to item eight, discussion on possible action motion that LA thirty-two NC approved funds now to exceed three hundred dollars for the Our Town El Sarino Car Show at Wilson High School on April sixth, twenty sixteen. This came out of Sports and Rec Committee. The chair is not here, Victor's not here. Oh, you're here. I don't expect to win. Can you speak on this or?
Uh, yes, I can, as a matter of fact.
Were you at the meeting when they made the question?
Yes, I was. Tony Contreras and a partner of his have been working with the community closely and other organizations, and had an idea about doing a car show. And this car show is to fundraise for the sports activity programs in Wilson High School. So it's not just one, it's not just basketball, it's not just football, it's not just whatever, it's all across the board. So whatever money that they are making, the, not the actual, what do you call them, funds that they, they raise will be going to Wilson High School. And if high school is ready to open their doors to something like this, and I think that we should be a participant in that. So we made the motion, and the motion was unanimous to bring this to the executive board and again, to committee, to the executive board, and we brought it now to the special needs.
Thank you. Is anybody prepared to move the motion?
I'm moving the motion.
Is there a second?
I'm starting.
Okay. Is somebody taking minutes?
No, the video.
He was on the video, yeah, he was on the off the video.
Okay, so motion was moved by Ruben, seconded by, was it you?
No.
We're here.
Jennifer.
Point of, point of information. I don't believe videos are legal. I think somebody asked to take the minutes.
He's gonna take, he's gonna watch.
He is, he's gonna watch the video and tell me.
I think he asked you.
Are you volunteering?
With his hand?
There you go then.
You'll be right back.
Okay, so motion's been, been moved, let's open this up for public comment. For a discussion. We're gonna start at the end.
Yeah, my, my biggest concern here is the fact that is this the same Our Town as the newspaper? The publication that we have here.
Let's just take this question.
Right? Because if it is, I think that there is a conflict of interest. And even though there may not be a direct conflict of interest, because, you know, you have a, the Julio Torres, which has been involved with Our Town, and even if it is his brother or relatives, as they said, going back to the ethics training that we got from the state, there's a perceived conflict of interest in this situation. Where you have a relative who also has a member working for the councilman's office. So there is a conflict of interest in terms of funding this. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, no comment. Ruben?
I'm not quite clear, I'm a little confused in the statement that Google made, I might have a problem with. Even though that's the city, the choruses that run that newspaper, Our Town.
It's not a newspaper, it's a magazine.
Oh, magazine, still a small print, you know, still a private entity, it's not a city entity. The monies, I'm somewhat confused because we, if we're gonna vote for money for, are we voting for money here, are they asking? Okay, so in terms of the conflict of interest, being that employees from that magazine work for the city, even though the night here is for them to move themselves out of here, still I somehow see the possibility of conflict of interest because they are employees of the city, and especially employees of this district, District fourteen, and where the activity is going to take place. And so to me, that should be something on the bylaw that addresses that. Should be a page and an article number or whatever down, and they're clearing that point. I'm for, I'm for voting for the money because it's needed, okay? But there is a legitimate concern there of the conflict of interest. I would like more clarity on that, please.
Thank you.
I'll actually adjust that right now, having just taken the, the ethics training. This would, and I, I don't know the individuals that you speak of, but by what you just said, it seems to me that this would be a conflict of interest only if those individuals were on this board. By virtue of the fact that the board is voting, if we were to ask them to vote money into another board member's pocket or a family member's board, then that would be the conflict of interest. But I, I don't see it in, in what you just said, based on those relationships. I, I intend, because it's, it's a community event and it benefits Wilson High School, I intend to vote in favor of this. But I do wanna say that if it does pass, however this actually gets physically provided to Wilson, if there's an announcement there, please let them know that we actually have a board meeting that night, and that is why members of the neighborhood council are there to support them in person, and that they're aware of that, whoever does that.
I have one more question on that.
Okay, I'm just listening to everybody's comments, and I'm sorry, the board meeting for?
We have our own board meeting that night, April sixth.
No, it's the sixteen.
It's the sixteen, yeah.
It's on a weekend.
Yeah, so, never mind, yeah.
It's April sixth, I know.
It does say April sixth.
It's a typo, it's supposed to be the sixteen. Okay.
And it's a nominee.
Right. I, I won't comment on this because I was actually there when we took the minutes and everything in the meeting.
I, I do have a question that I, I guess you all have to answer after we're done discussing, is where the money, where's the money gonna go? I mean, is it just like a donation to Wilson High School sports program, or are they gonna use it to buy snacks or?
Was there a budget?
Oh, they're actually three hundred dollars if they're asking for, I'll answer that when you're done.
Okay, thank you.
We don't do donations.
I know, that's why I'm asking. Troy?
No, I have no comment.
I just wanna know where the funds are gonna come from, which can we, does arts and culture, I'm sorry, does sports and rec have three hundred dollars to go to this event?
Okay, Tom, is that your only question? Angela?
Yeah.
No, just.
Scott?
Just to go piggybacking on maybe those comments, I think the person's question for the record is Julio Torres, staff member right now, Councilman Lee's Arts Office over here in El Sarino. But I've also looked at the magazine, and they list themselves in Lake Alsonar. So, one hand doesn't seem like it's Jermaine, somebody in the El Sarino community, but they are listed as the Lake Alsonar entity. Otherwise, it, otherwise, I really to, we've had a precedence on something like this, but a community publication in the past board where a board member has to recuse himself because of a publication that was requesting money, and the board, and the person who was attached to that publication was a city board member and was arriving a, a salary compensation. Worth to note, but I think otherwise, I, I really think unless there were treading in there, I mean, just the fact that this is, the only thing I would say is looking at this, how does our logo on this? But again, my only question is that Our Town, if you look inside magazine, if you're like Elsonar entity, we could be promoting businesses in our community.
Thank you. Mr. Chukon?
I was just gonna say, who's, 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 what's your by S and J and G, who, who was that?
Oh, those are sponsors. Those are sponsors.
Yeah, but who's the sponsor?
The actual person that's putting on the show is Psychopath, and that's the person that came to the Sports and Rec Committee meeting to bring his proposal. So it's a psych.
Yes, I think. So, so. All the questions? Did you have one more, Cynthia?
Yes, uh, I'm very glad that she got her name, that she cleared, Jennifer cleared the issue in terms of the conflict of interest, because I was confused, I appreciate that. The other question is, are we gonna be able to put a canopy? You know, I'll be willing to volunteer, I plan to be there anyway with the LA thirty-two. And whenever we give money to any, anyone, it's my understanding, in piggyback on Mr. Johnson just said, we need to have our logo or something saying that we sponsor, doesn't matter the amount of money, that we're giving money to fund a, an activity in the community here or wherever it is, there has to be a city logo and something about the District fourteen.
Well, we're there watching as well. Okay, thank you. Yes?
I just wanna say that we, we, Budget and Finance have a recommendation coming in, which is, I think, number eleven, or what is it, number ten? I don't see where this is gonna come from. I understand that it's a community event, but I'm sorry, if we take on this, we're gonna have to take from the kite fest. And I don't wanna see that taken from the kite fest. The kite fest needs the money that we're gonna recommend. The kite fest needs to get, get it going, and they're already printed, I'm pretty sure they printed thousands of these flyers already without our logo. Are they gonna spend money to print a thousand or whatever more to print our logo or not? We don't know that. You know, they might just tell us, yeah, here's the PDF or the JPG, you send it, put it on your, you know, your Facebook. We don't know they're gonna give us a bunch of big stacks and boxes with our logo, you know, we don't know.
They ran this.
You know, they ran this already. How are we gonna pay them? We, we cannot give them a check payable to Our Town, we can't give them a check. We have to fund an item, there's no line item. This is a, a motion that Rex, Parks and Recs Committee brought forth, but there's no line item. So we don't know what we're gonna be paying three hundred dollars for. It'd be nice to see a breakdown of what it is so we can get a more clear idea of what, what it would be or what it's gonna go towards.
That's exactly.
Okay, thank you. Now, can you go ahead and?
Can I see the question?
Yeah, so, well, my, my writing is, let's see.
Okay, let's.
So they covered their art town, the conflict of interest, um.
Okay, well, first of all, it's not our town, it's Psychopath.
Oh, okay.
Psychopath named it Our Town Concert and Car Show. Psychopath is the actual group that is doing this whole entire event. And they named it Our Town because it's our town concert and car show.
Okay.
Okay, that's my understanding.
Okay.
Okay, the second question?
The money, well, they asked where, Angela asked where the money would come from, Michelle clarified that it would come from the Kite Fest. Okay.
What is the other question?
Where, oh...
I'm sorry, go back to my question, the, the committee discussed, which, where, where the money happened?
Let me, let me look at the questions, and then I'll give you a whole rundown, okay?
Well, she's asking, 'cause was it discussed in the committee? At that time, as a committee, did you have money in your, in your bank?
All right, this is what happened at the meeting. When I spoke with Yolanda and June, and we had the gentleman's town, I specifically told them, we don't have any money in our committee, and we are not guaranteeing you that this is gonna go to the general board, it needs to go first to be discussed. We have a proposal, bring it to us. The gentleman said, if you cannot find the money to give us, we still want you to have a booth at our location. We want you to be a community representative, no matter what. This is just in case, we can find a hundred and fifty, three hundred, we could change the amount, we can do it. But they are well under the understanding, and I made it clear to them, we might not have any money to give you. And they said, it's fine, you can bring your booth, we want you to be there, you guys are the neighborhood council, you have an election coming up, we want to help you with the outreach. So that was their final words to us. As far as them bringing us a line item, that was what we told them.
Okay.
We can't guarantee you any money. And the funding would go to the general fund at Wilson High School for the sports program. So it would be for all sports that are involved at Wilson High School.
But our three hundred dollars, that's like a donation, and we're not...
No, 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 the, the funding that they're creating, the fundraising...
Where would our three hundred dollars go to?
Our three hundred dollars would go to one of their line items.
Oh.
It would either be trophies, or it would be medals, or it would be to feed, you know, our volunteers.
But that wasn't discussed?
It wasn't discussed because we didn't even have the money at the moment. So we told them, as soon as we make a vote, can you provide us a line item? And they said they would.
Okay, so then, are we able to put up a canopy? You clarified that, yes?
I'd like to amend, Madam Chair, that LE thirty-two participates on April sixteenth for the Our Town Concert and Car Show with just a booth to provide information on LE thirty-two.
I second it. We gotta discuss the public comment.
Yeah, let me just... So a motion that LE thirty-two participates in the Our Town Elsorino Car Show at Wilson High School on April sixteen. Participate with a booth.
I second it.
Is there any board discussion on the amendment?
Public comment first.
Is there any board discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, I, I wanna think, I'm glad the, the treasurer spoke up about the fact this would have on the budget. I would move to support the amendment, um, and move forward from there.
Okay. Yes?
Now, I'm looking at Psychopath Magazine, I got a couple of questions. It says it's a magazine for, uh, it says Psychopath brand was created to connect the urban cultures within the motorcycle communities, being a lifestyle showcase by Mainstream Media. And so, I guess my thing is, again, what, what we were saying before, who gets the money? Is that gonna be a city-approved vendor, right? I mean, I don't know if that's, that's been shown. And number two, again, the idea of whether or not we, if it's gonna go to Wilson as a nonprofit, then we can't do that, right?
Right, we can't, and actually, the amendment isn't for nobody's, right now we're speaking on the amendment.
On the amendment?
I know, and so I can, I can, I mean, I'm discussing why we would, we would wanna support maybe just being there. Okay? So that there's these issues that have not been clarified. But if they're willing to let us be there, I think it's an excellent opportunity for outreach. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Let's go ahead and take a couple of...
I'd like to, yes, I get the clarified, below the year, it says, uh, below sporting programs. There's a sort of like a writing, and it's not, and it's not eligible to be able to read what it is. I'd like to find out what, what, what are we attaching, what does it say there?
Oh, it says basketball, baseball, football, softball, volleyball, tennis, soccer, track and field, cross-country, and charity. It just lists the sports that it'll benefit. The sports programs at Wilson. Okay, let's take a vote on the amendment. So there was a motion to amend, um, to, so that the new motion will read, um, that LE thirty-two particip- participate with a booth at the Our Town Elsorino Car Show at Wilson High School on April sixteenth, twenty sixteen.
For outreach.
For election outreach, right?
Any kind of outreach.
Any kind of, any kind of, like, thirty-two outreach. It's for outreach. Do you want that in there?
Just outreach. Any kind of outreach, whoever's gonna do it, you know?
No, I know, but I'm saying, if we have a booth in it, it's for outreach, but do you want me to write that in there as well?
Outreach?
Yeah.
I think that's what I had said. Yes, please, thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and take a vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amended motion, or all in favor to amend the motion? Raise your hand. Eleven, opposed? Abstained? Eleven zero one, motion passes to amend. So now let's take a vote on the actual motion. And this motion reads that LE thirty-two Neighborhood Council participate with a booth for outreach at the Our Town Elsorino Car Show at Wilson High School on April sixteenth, twenty sixteen. Is there any public comment on this motion? Is there any board comment on it?
Well, a point of interest or clarification, since I just got appointed to the board, and I'm back in it, since between today and the last time we had a board meeting, the last Wednesday, that I was able to vote and all of that, it's fine. I just wanna put it on the record, I was in the Elections Committee and the Finance Committee, and the chair for the Finance Committee is right next to me, and she just right now said, you, we, Finance Committee, that means I've been reinstated in the Finance Committee, so...
We're on a motion, but...
Well, I said I pointed clarification.
Okay.
But I wanted on the record.
Let's take a vote on this motion. Do I need to read it again?
No.
Fine.
Okay. All in favor of supporting the motion for LE thirty-two NC to participate with a booth for outreach at the Wilson High School Car Show? Raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. Are you opposed, I mean, abstaining? Eleven zero one. Motion passes.
Okay.
I can't remove this motion. I would've removed it, but you wanted explanation, so I gave the explanation as to what we discussed. So I am not the chair to remove the motion, but I'm, I, he was perfectly fine with their not moving. So I'm just gonna put that on the record.
Okay.
But the maker of the motion couldn't, well, it doesn't have to be the chair of the committee.
I wasn't the maker of the motion.
Okay. Item number nine, discussion on possible action. Motion that LE thirty-two NC approve four movie nights to be held at Elsorino Rec Center, Rose Hill Rec Center, Ascot Hills Park, and Guardia Park with no funds requested, also out of the Sports and Rec Committee. Did you wanna speak on this quickly?
Oh, yes, what we discussed was to have movie nights and bring popcorn and all that stuff, but that's not gonna happen because of the fact that we don't have any money to do that. But we can use our equipment, which is, you know, speakers and all of the things that we have. And I think somebody said they might be able to get, excuse me, a screen, a portable screen, a blow-up screen, and we can just do it that way, just to do some outreach for the, the four regions, so...
Okay.
And that's without any money, that's no funding required.
Is that the motion? What you said?
No, she's asking me because I was at the Sports and Rec meeting.
Are you gonna move the motion?
I will move the motion, but I'd like to make comments too.
Oh, we need a move first.
I second it, no, she seconded.
Motion move by Scott, seconded by Angela. Is there a public comment on this motion? Okay, board comment?
If I may, a lot of times, the, uh, there's other entities that have money that I think we should, I'm saying we should educate the community that there's other sorts of the funding. For example, Food for Lunch has a community foundation through the parents of Lee Kroger, that if given enough time, could donate to some of these entities. It grows your collaborative base, the people getting involved. And also too, is, if we're putting a seed by using our equipment, maybe we get these other entities to come in and, and grow upon that. I think sometimes, uh, people forget, and I mean, somebody, just for background, I took a collaboration, a partnership class, applied program for Community Development Department back in two thousand and five. And one of the things that a lot of community organizations that I'm noticing have to start looking at the foundations of, for it to have businesses, Grifols, that have been very proactive in supporting community events, but also Food for Lunch too. And I remember the last board during my news committee, we sat down with people when they were working on the remodeling over at the, the market, and one of the things I asked was about their foundation, and giving some lead time in the, in the future to, you know, work on each type of donations to sustain these type of events, in addition to our resources.
Is there any discussion, any other board comment on the motion? Ruben?
I, well, I'm fine with us being there, it's possible for me, I will attend that and help with whatever, whoever checked out the equipment or whatever to set it up and all that. Unfortunately, we don't have money, but we are able to be there and do some outreach also for the Elections Committee, which I'm, am I still a member of that? Okay, I'm still a member of that, so, uh, that will be, probably the chair will ask me to go down there and help out or whatever. I'm, I'm for that.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else?
Do we have dates?
No.
They're tentative.
I mean, do we have a time frame?
Oh, yeah, just one more thing, um...
The next team, I guess, but we're ready.
Just make sure that, um, you submit the paperwork on time, so I can get it done as far as like the event form.
Why does she need an event form with no funds?
You still need to do, uh, an event form.
To check out our equipment?
No, because we're gonna be at an event with something.
We're gonna be there, we're gonna be part of that.
Could be a liability, it's a issue, I don't know.
So you just wanna make sure, you know, if we're co-sponsoring or not, 'cause the application tells you whether you're a constant co-sponsor, the main sponsor, and, uh, check with risk management to make sure we have all our tips.
That's life of it.
Okay.
Even though we're not money, we're still liable.
Okay. Okay, are we ready to take a vote on this? Okay, so the motion reads that LE thirty-two NC approved four movie nights to be held at Elsorino Rec Center, Rose Hill Rec Center, Ascot Hills Park, and Guardia Park with no funds requested. All in favor of this motion? Raise your hand. Twelve zero zero. Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to ten, discussion on possible action. Motion that LE thirty-two NC cancel from the election category the approved sixteen hundred dollars for the community beacon. Instead, funds will be used to pay the remaining cost for printing fifteen thousand, come out and vote, full color size, six and a half by nine inch postcards, and fifteen thousand full color brochure size eleven by seventeen. Uh, this came out of Ad-Hoc Election Committee. And I think there's an attachment one for you to remember.
Move the motion.
You move the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, is there any public comment on this motion? I'm sorry, before you move it, um, did you want, did you have anything to say about this?
If you have any questions, I'll answer.
Okay.
George, charge your safe phone.
Yes.
Public comment, hold on. Sorry, let me get my timer on.
Okay.
Hold on.
Wait, George, wait, she's trying to turn you. Just give her one second.
Okay, you have two minutes. Ready? When to start, I'll start it.
Okay, great, okay. Before, um, let's just say, before I say anything, uh, I just wanted to let you know that, uh, today, I sacrificed this meeting, 'cause today is my birthday, okay? And a good friend of mine, she was gonna take me out to dinner, but I told him that I set my priorities for my community. I support my community, and that includes the community beacon, and that's why I'm here. I read the, uh, the agenda item, and, um, I, I have to say something. You know, this was voted in January for the funding for the sixteen hundred dollars. Just wanna bring that up to the board's attention in the January meeting, okay? And I don't think it's right, what the board is doing, okay? And I'll tell you why, okay? In order to do proper outreach through the community, especially in this area of Elsorino, okay? This is the only way that you'd be able to outreach a lot of constituents and a lot of stakeholders in this community, okay? And, uh, at this time, uh, I'd like to give my two minutes also to Anthony. Anthony?
He's not a, he's not a stakeholder.
Huh? I can almost be during public comment in board discussion. Oh, okay, okay, okay. But, uh, that's what I have to say at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, board comment?
Yeah, I have a question, and it has to do with, if a motion has already been passed and approved...
That's right.
The only way to bring it back up is reconsideration. Now, my, my understanding is that the time limit for reconsideration has passed. Therefore, I don't know how one motion can cancel another motion that's already been passed. And so somebody has to enlighten me there, because I believe we can't bring it up, it's already done deal.
That's right.
That's all I'm seeing, and the other thing is, I, I think that there should be a mix. And, and, you know, when I used to do advertising, I used to buy advertising, you wanna have a mix. You don't wanna put all your eggs in one basket. You wanna have, be able to get out there and reach. I still haven't gotten a mailer on the election in my house, and I belong. I'm, I'm thinking, well, wait a minute, uh, when, am I ever gonna get a mailer? 'Cause I know, we don't have enough mailers for everybody, right? So some people are not gonna get mailed too. So how are they gonna find out about the election? Some people are not gonna tell you any of the functions that we're gonna outreach on. So I think that the fact that we did buy or, or purchase the sixteen hundred dollars for, for this motion, we should just stay. Why, why at this time change it? The elections are coming up. That's it, that's all I can say. Thank you.
Forza?
We sent out fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine mailers, and I have confirmation here. You can check the post office for the address if you feel you're in danger of sending the mail. It has all the, uh, the breakdown of all the areas that it mails, and I think I scanned and emailed it to, to every single one of you, so you can look at what I did within the, what we did within those three days. A receipt that they got paid, and how many got sent on that day. Do you, do you live in one of those areas? You should, if, if it is, I'm welcome, you know, to sit with you and go online and show you, um, where you live, and confirmation proof here that I did send it to that area, that postcard. So everyone did get it, it guarantees it. The mailer guarantees it in your mailbox. The beacon doesn't guarantee it in your mailbox. This is a business that went sour. This is a business that they did not wanna provide proper document. They wanted the treasurer to just pay them. Just pay me. They didn't wanna provide the artwork. It was a he said, she said, you said, you said, no, I didn't, yes, you did. And they still didn't wanna provide the artwork. They wanted us just to pay for it and, and just trust that it will come out nice, and not to worry about it. But I'm sorry, as a treasurer, that is not how I conduct business. I have to see proof of the artwork, a draft. Invoice was provided, but the artwork wasn't. Jeremy Espinosa didn't wanna provide artwork. And I gave, I think, everybody in my committee copies of that text. He clearly said on the text, if you don't pay upfront, you are customer number twenty-five. But if you pay me right now, then I'll show you a drafted artwork, and then we'll be number one customer. So because three thousand was approved for graphics and print, which was a really good deal he gave us, we couldn't go with him no more, 'cause he refused to give us artwork. And this is why we're coming and trying to get the sixteen hundred, because we ended up getting another vendor, which we could switch vendor, but we cannot switch the amount. The amount is three thousand, and we cannot change that amount, but we are able to switch it to another vendor, which is what we did. We got Jim Tab, who did last year's graphics. He charged five twenty-five for the graphics. We got Charlie's Printing to do the first postcard, and now we need him to print the next postcard and the brochure. But we cannot move forward, 'cause we can't go over the three thousand, and it's gonna be a little bit more than three thousand, 'cause we switched the vendor. And at the same time, the beacon is not being cooperative, so this is why we decide, I as the chair said, let me bring it to my committee, because it is something that, that, it, it just wasn't being able to be done. So the committee sat, we took, you know, we talked about it, and, uh, it was unanimous. The committee said, let's take it to the... The committee said, let's take it to the general board so the general board can vote on this and discuss this. So that's why we're here.
Thank you, Ruben.
I believe that Mr. Pacheco has a very legitimate point. But since we're dealing with the US Postal, they're, they've been doing their business for so many years and it's very accurate what they do. And if they guarantee something, they live up to it. The postal, like all the other people that deal with delivering mail and other type of stuff, they all run into problems. I had my, my veteran's check queued up through the postal, okay? Then the same problems happened and it took me a long time to get my December check. I just got it a couple of days ago. That's December 2015 check. Anyway, that's how I feel that Mr. Pacheco, to a certain point, has a legitimate concern. But even though the postal does have problems, 99% of the time, it gets through. Just yesterday, it was on the news, this big truck ran into a...
Let's stay on point, please.
No, no. Because that was a postal truck. That was a postal truck. Now, we're talking about the postal, how it guarantees. And I'm saying, according to Mr. Pacheco, how the mail sometimes doesn't get right. I use my check as an example, but it was in the news. 50-foot trailer with a tractor that semi, a car hit it and it went into a building and the guy was trapped and all that. And so things do happen. But outside of those unusual events, you know, you can rest assured you're gonna get this. You may not get it to, how many residents in El Serena more?
Okay, are you for, so I'm hearing that you're supporting?
Yeah, I support it, but I support what the chair said because she's very good at what she does.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer?
I sit on this committee. I just wanna say the chair is doing a fantastic job and her patience has been tried. I salute you, how hard you have worked at this.
Yes.
What I've seen here from, from, you know, the paper is just wild.
Pick on you.
I'm the cat person and, you know.
The cat supports the issue anyway.
Hi.
Okay, I totally lost track of what I was saying.
One more poll.
You know what, no, no, no.
No, it's fine.
It's fine.
You were saying that the beacon.
Thank you. What I've really seen here, with all due respect, is just some really bully tactics with the beacon just saying, you better give us money because we're telling you that we have this distribution. And I've asked again and again, show me the data. And what I get is a single eight by 10 because I said so. Because there's research somewhere that says newspapers somewhere get this distribution, we do too. That's not data. That's just the beacon saying again and again, just trust us and give us a bunch of money. And I have a real problem with that. So again, I completely support the chair and this committee's recommendation.
Thank you. Anthony?
Yes, I'd like to give some input. I did attend the, it was the elections committee, but it was a joint membership and outreach committee. It was out at the Caesar Chavez Elementary School. And I agree with Mr. Pacheco and I mentioned it at the committee meeting, that reconsideration is the proper process to follow if you wish to change the body's vote. We already voted on this and like the stakeholder mentioned, if this was approved in January, then it's a commitment of the board
That's right.
to follow through with the payment. Not to send it back to committee, not for the committee to overrule what the board decided, not to come back with a secondary recommendation, not to say we can make amendments or adjustments. The board already took a position. Being the former president, I would have advised the treasurer to process payment. Now, if enough material, data, artwork, invoices, whatever may not have been in possession of the treasurer, then I would have worked with the vendor to make sure those documents are supplied to the treasurer so that we could process payment. That's what we are compelled to do because the board took action. The second thing is, I believe Luis has recently, I would say, over the weekend, submitted artwork, submitted invoices, submitted W2 forms or W4 forms, whatever he needs to submit to comply with his obligation. So now that we have received the material, the board has already taken an action, the next thing, next step is to just process it. I'm really not sure exactly how the arrangements are between the 1,600 and the $3,000. I understand that there's gonna be additional postcards or flyers or, I don't know what to call them, you know, material that will be distributed. But I also agree with Mr. Pacheco that we have to have multiple forms of advertisement. It only makes sense if you could have billboards, bus shelter advertisements, newspaper advertisements, postcards, businesses advertising this. Then truly what you're doing is you're allowing for the greatest number of outreach to potential stakeholders. But if you put all of your focus into one form of advertisement, I will tell you this much, by default, you are excluding someone. Even if you say, we put it in everybody's mailbox, we just heard the director say that they didn't get it in their mailbox. So I'm not saying that with multiple advertisements, it covers all bases. But if you only use one source, like again I said, by default, somehow you're excluding some people. And my position is to be as versatile as possible, to maintain our commitment that we voted in in January. And I would say for us to even hear this issue, it has to go through the reconsideration process, which is not being proposed at this time. So therefore, I cannot support this recommendation by the committee to overrule the board's previous decision.
Thank you. Sidney?
I abstained from the original vote. I do have a couple of comments, but I think I will refrain from saying them. I'm not quite sure about the reconsideration. I agree that that is the only way to change, you know, that would be the proper process. But in this case, if it's just changing of a vendor, I believe that the department was called and I think that you can do it. I think it's bad business both ways, all around, to give somebody business and take away at the same time. I think that the, I agree with what Jennifer says and the tactics that are used by the beacon are, they put you off a bit. And, but we knew that going in and we have approved it. So, and it was, the motion was made knowing that going in. That's been said at a number of meetings in the past. So I, I'm getting abstained from this one.
I have no comment.
Okay, I have a concern, only the handling and professionalism of working with the beacon. Because I've seen the emails going back and forth and for some reason, the communication between the beacon and the chair of the elections committee or volunteers. We're spending a lot of time trying to figure out where is the artwork, what's going on. And I don't feel that it was appropriate to have so many other people involved in it with avoiding directly contacting the chair of the committee and just dealing it and sorting it out at that time. I think it was a waste of time for everyone to see it just for artwork that needed to be presented. That bothered me a bit because it was like, yes, the board agreed for the 1,600, but then we also haven't seen any information. And again, the communication seemed to go through other individuals versus just dealing directly with the people involved. That was my particular problem. I think the beacon is a great way to do outreach and don't reject it. My other concern would be, do we have, if we continue with the beacon and doing the 1,600, we won't be able to, what's gonna, what's the, what are we gonna have to cut out? The brochure, and this goes back to the elections chair. Are we gonna have to cut out the brochure or the postcards in order to solidify it? But I think my concern is, and Anthony said it very well, we just received the artwork last weekend and it's taken over a month to try to get this result. And that was my biggest problem is if we're gonna work together, we're gonna work together. If we're not, then we're wasting our time. We should have just found another vendor to do it. No offense to the beacon, but that was my biggest concern was the handling of the process. And then I think being told the elections chair received the message saying, use someone else. What do we do as a board? If the board decided to use the vendor and then you're getting this negative feedback, how are we supposed to move forward? Keeps us stagnant. That is my position.
Thank you. Tom?
I don't have enough to rip discussion of this particular issue. However, once you make a decision, you stick with it and you make it work.
That's right.
Somehow. So I say it's hence a decision made. I cannot support redirecting the funds.
Thank you. Scott?
Just a couple of questions real quick. Who is Jim, Jim and Jim Tap?
Oh, Tap.
Chip Tap, he's the vendor that you guys used last year for elections to do design.
Yeah, I have a, you and I were on the election committee last time around. Is that the person from West LA area?
Yes, it is.
That was referred to by Jay Hando?
Sure.
Okay. And Charles, is that a local person?
Charlie's Printing is on Houdini Drive, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, those questions answered. Now, a couple of things here. Do we technically have a breach of contract? Because if something was approved and parties entered into an agreement, have we got to the level of a breach of contract to say, hey, the decision to... Because potentially here, we have a, a vote that was done by the board and voted and approved. I believe it's actually been submitted into the record in the minutes?
January's minutes.
Yes.
Okay.
And approved?
And approved. Unless there is a, my concern here, unless there is a serious breach of contract that has been reviewed by the city attorney, we are technically taking on some legal liability. Also too, I have, I have a concern and it goes back to the last election cycle of a city appointed person recommending employees for contracts. And I had this problem last one year and I, and I still have this problem with a person who now is overseeing the citywide neighborhood council election recommending vendors. I find that to be an inherent conflict of interest and unethical at the same time. I had this question when we picked our web designer. Because again, that was a person recommended by a person at that time, Ivan. And we don't know what, I mean, if they're going to the neighborhood council, the neighborhood council, and if you look at the records, you can see that our webmaster does business with other neighborhood councils. That presents some situations there where ethically, I would have questions about the relationship between the people making the recommendation and the vendors involved. But getting back to the root of the problem here is that the board made a decision. There was a reconsideration, which is supposed to take place immediately after the meeting where the action took place. I believe we're beyond that threshold. And I think at this point, I am, the personalities, I'm, I'm not, let me take that back. Okay, bye. The point here is that we have an agreement. We have to be professional in working with the vendor to follow through on their end of the agreement. And since time is of essence, if they're not following through, then the city attorney need to formally get involved and notify the vendor that they're under a breach of contract. Because here, the record already states that this was approved and you, you, no matter who the person is, the point of fact that you already took an action and a reconsidering time period is passed beyond us, this opens up all other kind of ethical ones.
Thank you. Mr. Chukon?
I agree with that, with Anthony. And I, I think that, and also, it's a done deal. It's already been done, everything else. I think it's, it's also similar to a contract where we agreed, and this possibly even the work done, already done to set this up. You just can't set up a newspaper overnight and then some work has been done. That means there's gotta be compensation for that work already done, as an agreement already done. We agreed. We agreed on this thing and it's already been signed and it's already been approved. Now, question number two, example. If we turn around and start canceling everything else, the other board says, I disagree with the car show. Next week, I'm gonna go and say, hey, I wanna cancel the car show. I don't agree with it. We don't need a car show, you know? They've got a train show. You know, I'm just using the example, but that's, that's, that's not, I disagree with that. We got a contract going.
Thank you. For the sake of time, is there, who's, who needs a second comment?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, maybe a visual will make you understand. So these, this is the, this is the United States Post Office first time. I'm looking at this at roughly 45,000 people, 40,000 in our area, right, residents. So we make a 15K here, 15K here and 15K here. Who makes the decision? If I belong in this 15K that never gets covered by the United States Post Office, I don't care how much the United States Post Office guarantees it, I will never get a mailer, okay? I've been disfratized, I've not been communicated to. Even if you were to get two thirds of it, you're still one third off. So all I'm saying is because, because you can't get it all through the United States Post Office, you need to have a mix. You need to have some other backup. Now, whether or not, and this is key, and I'm not a lawyer and Ruben knows, right? I'm not a lawyer, but there is a thing called performance. That party has performed, whether it has performed wrongly, badly, or unprofessional, it has met its side. On the other hand, the way I was taught in corporate, you wanna have a very nice relationship with the media. I don't care how bad the media is. One thing you don't wanna ever do is get the media mad at you. So I would suspect that somewhere along the line, right? We need, like it was said earlier, have a little bit more of a working relationship with our local media. Because believe me, folks, it's not a good idea. And it isn't about blackmailing, it isn't about rough tactics, it's about the way this country is founded and how powerful the media is. Thank you.
Thank you. Mousa?
January 27, I emailed Luis that I got confirmation to go ahead with this, proceed with this payment, but I need these items. So this has been going on since January 27, you know, and you guys have copies and I could forward this to all of you. And he clearly states, you know, well, we've never done that kind of work. And I said, would you be kind? He goes, what do you need? I go, just make sure it has this date, this address, this time. Be creative, you know, give us something, surprise us. He says, we've never ever done anything like that. This is all through email back and forth. He has other committee members calling me because he won't call me. He, other committee election members are telling him, call her. I call him, he won't answer me, he won't call me. He sends George, George and I speak and I explain to George the situation. George says he's gonna try to get the artwork. I'm not shutting the door, I am keeping it open. And George says, I will try to get you the artwork. I go, thank you, I mean, you know, that's all we want, just give me the artwork and you're gonna get paid. There you go. I'm not being a person who's shutting down the local business and, and I'm afraid if I get the media mad, they might say something bad about me. Oh, well, that's the media. He does leave me a message, George, and he clearly tells me on this message right here that he is, he is upset, he is not gonna listen, he is stubborn. He leaves me very messages and he's literally telling me on these messages on how Luis is upset, he is beyond angry, he's not gonna listen, he's stubborn. Now you know what I gotta deal with when I work with this guy. Now you gotta know the, the, you know, what concern and stress that he brings down on me because he wants this payment to go through. So now I'm getting the guilt trip that I gotta pay them because George is going through stress, through trauma in his life because Luis is doing this to him. So do I feel guilty and say, okay, okay, here, let me just pay? Because poor George is getting done like this? Or do I continue to be a professional and say, but I need the artwork? I need the artwork. That's all I need. Then we have an election committee and the committee does unanimous vote. Anthony was there and Anthony was very well informed of it. Why didn't he bring up the reconsideration is not approved? He didn't say nothing there.
I did.
No? I, I'm sorry, maybe you did and I didn't recall. So what happens now is after we voted to bring it to the board here, Jose Aguilar calls me and tells me, I would like to sit down and have a meeting with you and Luis. Sure, no problem. In this meeting, I would like to discuss the conflict of interest that there is between you. I don't have conflict of interest, but I will sit down and listen to anything he has to say. Just so you know, he's not gonna provide you the artwork and he's not gonna give it to you. You will have to provide the artwork yourself, okay? Do I really wanna meet now with these individuals? Do I really wanna meet now with these individuals? I still said yes. I asked him to come thirty minutes before me and Mr. Chavez met that day and/or before the elec-, election executive committee. They didn't show up. Nobody showed up to meet me in person and discuss this. Then Louis emails me and tells me, that was not my planning. What George and Jose are doing is on them. I made it clear what I want and I want you to make the payment because I want you to provide something you agree on. It's a business that has went sour. I am really trying to work with these individuals. I don't have nothing against them. I just feel that if I pay them without the proper document, then I am doing something wrong as far as the treasure, Office of Treasure. So now that money, you know, what do we take out to answer Angela's question? We just, you know, if you guys all say, no, let's still pay them the sixteen hundred, we don't get to send out another brochure to remind everybody to vote. And that brochure was gonna be sent out a month before the election. As to this magazine or this community beacon is only gonna promote for five days. From April fifteen to April twenty-first, I think that's five, six days. For sixteen hundred dollars, for only six days. As to the postcard in the US Postal Office will go out as of, as soon as March twenty-second. We know exactly who's on the board. That's when we start reminding people to go out and vote. We print fifteen thousand because the extra we use as outreach when we're at events, we pass out the postcard. So that's why we need that extra money.
Son, okay?
I have a couple of comments about this to respond to some of the board members that have made some sort of, well, procedurally, we can't really change. There must be a way to pass this motion. Simply because if the beacon didn't do anything at all, we would still be able to reverse this motion. There had to be a way. If they're not fulfilling their contractual obligations, we're not just automatically, no matter what, we've gotta sign the check and hey, throw it away. That's, that's just not how this works. At least I hope that's not how good government works. You know, imagine if you had a plumber come into your home and not do the work for months and months and months. You wouldn't sit here and say, I guess I'll still give that plumber whatever money they set. You wouldn't do that. And as an independent entity, we have a right to get what we are paying for. This idea that we should pay them to have a working relationship with the media is, is horrifying to me because that's not a working relationship with the media. What we've got here now is, is in essence, the beacon, I wanna carefully use my verb here. The beacon is getting, is trying to get this board to pay for the news that a good, responsible journalistic organization should be covering anyhow. If you're that concerned about our community, if you're that concerned about the elections, this is what your newspaper should do. It shouldn't say, give us sixteen hundred dollars and we'll cover your election. Otherwise, we're not gonna do it. I have a real problem with that. I have a real problem with that.
Thank you.
I, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say, I, I agree with, with again, everything Jennifer said.
As I do, as I do.
But we knew all this stuff going in. And that was a shock to me that that was, it was even brought to the table to fund that. I do have a problem with them charging for stories and they charge for stories, events. Even to write about your events, they try and charge you. We've known this. I also am wondering if all these details were worked out prior. Was there any discussion as to will they provide the artwork? Or was it just kinda like, okay, yeah, we'll, we'll give you our business? It sounds like the details weren't worked out prior. The media stuff. I attended their meetings. Me and my kids passed out thousands of their newspapers. I brought food to their meetings. They still tore me apart at every chance they could once we didn't fund them. We knew all this though going in. So again, I mean, I hate, I'm, I'm gonna abstain from this. But in the future, for the board members who are gonna stay on in the future, work out all the details. Get the details in writing before you enter into something that's binding. Because I hate, for me, contractually, I hate to break, it's not a contract, but.
And that actually was agreed verbally. We were at the library at that meeting when we did say you're gonna provide the artwork. That's why we brought the motion forward because we were excited that they were gonna do the artwork.
My other concern immediately was banners. When do they start making banners? They're a beacon. Why would we pay them to make banners? And where are they printing these out of? Somebody's garage? Where's the pollutants going? These are all things like, I don't know. I, I'm gonna abstain from this. I just, next time, or for the future, you know, details upfront. Um, you know, we, we all know who operates how and it was still brought forward and voted on. Anthony?
Yeah, I, I'm not, I don't, I don't think we buy the beacon for articles or anything. I've, I've never seen that. I've also participated on their hot looks that they've had. But my concern mainly is the cooperation and the artwork. Michelle, did you receive, did you review the artwork that was recently submitted? Is the committee gonna approve it? And my main concern is how long it took to receive some information that was already agreed on. And if you're talking about contractual agreements, it would have been breached a long time ago.
But there is.
So I, I have no problem, I think, like I said, getting into business with the beacon isn't the issue. Writing the articles that they write, I don't think there's any issue that they, we buy them. My only concern is, are they gonna be able to provide? And if the artwork that was submitted last week does not work, are we gonna go back into this two-month process after elections to get more artwork if that doesn't, the committee doesn't agree to it? That's my concern. I would suggest that if we're gonna move forward with the sixteen hundred dollars with the beacon, that we put a timeframe and that they must provide the artwork and the information in writing by the next fourteen days or prior to the next general board meeting. Because if you don't start putting a timeframe, then we're gonna continuously get stringed on.
Make an amendment, I'll say that.
I'll make an amendment.
Okay.
Um, but before that, that's my main comment, is how long that I seen since January, all the way up to now, we're in March, thus for artwork that we just received last week.
Yeah, so.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, if I may, um, Michelle, the person overseeing the monetary payment for this, have any of this stuff been forwarded to the city attorney for review? Okay. I would strongly recommend that part of this motion in terms of a time period, that this information be forwarded to the city attorney. We need to get the personalities out of this. This is a business transaction. It's not a personal issue. Mainly a deal that was already approved on the record by the neighborhood council. It's fair, fair to the business involved, there's that. If there was, whatever conditions need to go towards that, if they're not met by a time period, and I would think the city attorney would need to review this to make sure that legally, we are in the right in doing this. And then the city attorney should be the, the person forwarding this information to the vendor. That after, if definitely a certain time period is not met, then you're in breach of contract and the board will move forward in seeking another remedy. Okay? Once again, and you know, we're, we're, some of us here are bordering on issues here regarding personal, and personal opinions. But the point is, this is a business transaction and it needs to be kept in that frame of thought. The board already approved, something is on the record, and the reconsidering merits in time period has passed. Thus, we are still binding, in my opinion. But I would ask that if, if there is a motion before it's put aside period, also to represent the city attorney, be given all this information and the city attorney forward that to the vendor stating that this is what needs to be done and it's not a certain time period.
Somebody has to make a motion.
Um, a motion for what? What, I think?
Amen.
Can I just make a ten-second comment? Just, because just in response to some of the comments. I wasn't on the board when this, this passed and my position on this has been consistent since I've been on the election committee and since I've been on the board. So in response to some of the illusions, I just wanted to say.
Thank you. Um, my suggestion would be that we vote on it. If it passes, then we run it through, run it through the city attorney. If it's not allowed, then it's not allowed. Um, just for sake of time, I don't know where, I'm sorry, Ms., what you guys wanted to amend it to. What did you want amended?
Put a timeframe on it, but I would go back, maybe discuss it before we even look at this, discuss it with the city attorney in advance and see if we're able to, even, why vote on it? If the city attorney is gonna turn around and say, you can't do that.
Because this might be your last opportunity to get it passed.
No, because we still have a lot more. And also, we might wanna check if they're, if they haven't been productive and maybe have a committee meeting to review the current artwork that's there. If the committee doesn't decide, I'm hoping that the beacon is gonna be there so we can come into an agreement in regards to the artwork that we're gonna want to see. And if that doesn't work out and it goes stale, then what do we do? I think those are all questions to the city attorney because we agreed to something. It took so many months to get the artwork and the paperwork in. How many more, how long is it gonna take? So I would suggest we table this item until the next meeting and so you get clarification from the city attorney and have an elections committee to review the current artwork that's there.
Should we make a motion postpone?
I make a motion to postpone the item.
Till the next?
Till the general board meeting?
Till the next.
There's a motion on the floor.
Well, second, but isn't it, the condition on clarification by the city attorney, right?
Clarification of the city attorney.
Tell us the more, if we can, please.
She's tabled, she's making a motion to table the item.
Postpone the item until the next general board meeting pending clarification from the city attorney regarding the process and your agreement and, uh, agreement that the board had made.
You got that, Anthony?
What?
More or less.
Are you got? It's no sense of table. Right, yeah.
Postpone.
Postpone.
Is there a second to her, um, to tabling the item? A second?
People second it.
Okay. Um, have a comment? Board comment?
Uh, I understand the idea to postpone or defer board action till another day. But to go back and seek advice from the city attorney, basically what that means, if I was a city attorney, that not one of the board members sitting on this board knows what they're doing.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And that would, that would get me so upset because we'd be like, why are we having stakeholders?
You're really concerned about that now after you thirty thousand and thousands?
No, I've been right, I've been right about ninety-four percent of every decision I make for the last ten years. I'm still getting it made.
They don't do this to me. I don't get, you don't set up and say that's their job.
But aside from that, this, if we go and seek advice from them when we already know what we are supposed to do, it almost baffles me sitting here taking notes that not one board member on here, except for the one at the end, which is Mr. Pacheco, actually has the right direct path that we're supposed to follow. I know what we're supposed to do, but without the guidance of the president and without the support of the board, it doesn't matter if Anthony knows what to do. The board will ultimately make a decision. Now, I know I will get support from one colleague over here and perhaps others. But the idea is if we always, always, always asking the city attorney what to do, by default, it means you don't know what you're doing. And yes, we're, none of us are attorneys, but we're supposed to take action. We're supposed to be binding. We are, we are, we enter, and I don't wanna say contracts, but when the board makes a decision, we are compelled to follow through with it. The only way, like Jennifer, is that there has to be a way out. Yes, that's what the reconsideration process allows. But if you're beyond the allotted time, there is no way out. So then it goes back to breach of contract, which I think.
Sure, you're right. I have the time to mention it. No, I disagree. There is a way out. If they didn't come through and they never provided.
You're another vendor.
I was gonna mention that. I was gonna mention that. I was gonna mention that.
They never have a vendor. That's the way out.
They never provide the documents.
Then you're using a vendor, but I've been patient trying to wait for them to deliver this.
What it is, is. Okay, but they've already submitted the documentation. So oddly enough, sitting here today, you have everything you need.
That's the problem is that. Right, is there a timeframe?
The treasure, well, that's what I'm gonna mention.
There probably isn't.
The treasure has the most difficult condition to follow because I was previously the treasurer. And there was one time where I had to wait for almost six months for a committee to spend money. And I don't know if you guys remember this, it was to paint the utility boxes. I had to pay the paint, the supplies, and the brushes. Well, guess how long I had to wait as treasurer? To the end of the fiscal cycle.
Okay, so.
So yes, there is a time limit.
Okay, thank you.
To the end of June.
I'm gonna amend my motion to clarify my motion before that. It's pending clarification from the city attorney and the recommendation from the elections committee after reviewing the current artwork that was submitted.
Yeah.
They, the, the board already voted on this. There is no recommendation from the committee.
We haven't received the artwork. It's an incomplete project.
Okay, Anthony, we get your, we get your position on it and we thank you for it. But we're not gonna argue about it. That's your, that's your opinion.
We don't know what it is. The committee has a right to.
Hugo?
You know, much, much in terms of procedure, right? If you're in a bind, if I can try to get this in the timeline. The next board meeting is gonna be how many days from now?
Two weeks.
Okay.
Two weeks plus.
Alright, so if the beacon performs. No, 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 no. If the beacon performs as has been requested in the past, within that time period.
I know.
Exactly.
Right, wait a minute. Again, the promise, the promise to perform has been fulfilled. Then it becomes our responsibility to pay. The process on how that got done may not be the most professional. I grant you that from either one side or the other. I don't know, I don't accuse who's professional, unprofessional. It's not for us to decide. Because whether or not what we asked for was done, and if it's done within that time period from now to the, the boards, I think we're stuck paying it.
It, it was done already. I agree. It was too long. It was, uh, it's not fair to the chair who's, you know, was on top of it from the very beginning. But it has been done and that's our only, our, I think, a lot of our concerns with, and why the city attorney would be consulted because it has been done. They fulfilled their part at, at this point.
Then that will be paid. We don't have to ask the city attorney then, right?
So, 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 I, I'd like to say something, so they.
Right, just like, but also we should have.
They, you have been mistreated, okay?
So, so, so the way, so the way we take care of this, we just do what we did with the graphics guy and the printing company.
No, we have that. I'm not even sorry.
That's why we have three bids from other vendors. If it went sour with this first vendor, then you move on to the next vendor. But because I wanted to be patient and work with the beacon and our committee was like, let's work with them. Local business, it went sour. We could right now go to another vendor without the board saying, no, you can't. We approve the amount for an article on a newspaper. We can use any newspaper we want right now without any of you saying, you can't do that, Michelle. It's illegal. No, it's not.
Then why is it on here?
The amount is approved and it quickly.
Why didn't you guys just do that?
What, because, because we want, we wanted to work with the beacon. We were really trying hard to.
And the, you know, which are.
Right, but you're saying that you don't, you could just go with another vendor at this point without bringing it to the board.
Correct.
Why is it on here?
Just like the way we said, we, we would vote for Jeremy Espinosa, but in department clearly said you have other bids, thank you.
Right, no, I get it. I understand. And I know that's correct.
Yeah, they said the amount, the amount was approved, so you could use another vendor.
It's true, eh?
But then my question is then, why are we sitting here discussing it? Why didn't you guys just do it?
Because I was trying to work with the beacon and.
No, I get that. I get that. But the beacon didn't work out.
I know.
So without coming to the board and putting a motion on our agenda, why didn't you just go with the next vendor?
And I think that's gonna be the solution to avoid this reconsideration, going to illegal reconsideration.
Because you're saying you didn't have to bring it to us.
Yeah.
So why are we sitting here discussing it? Why didn't you just make that decision?
I should have made that decision.
So you're telling, you don't need to discuss this.
No, we actually really don't. I was just trying to be considerate to the beacon.
We're dealing with another paper.
You know?
And, and that's another concern that's happened, is that you have, they already turned in the artwork. We don't even know what the artwork is. And now we're just gonna say, okay, now they go with someone else. But guess what? They've already provided the artwork. It was emailed and they, and.
Production is on May fifteen. On May fifteen, you don't wanna tell them, get involved because May fifteen is not get involved.
I'm not questioning whether or not you can go to another vendor because I, I believe that you can.
We can.
And I know I've, I've spoken to them before, but my, my question is then, why are we, and I don't, don't take this term wrong, wasting our time discussing it if we could just do it.
Actually.
Can I just point out, there is no parklet outside of Blue for Less.
It's gone.
Yeah, that needs to be. Guys, that's what I'm saying. We need to proofread the artwork before it goes out, which I'm assuming is not gonna be.
All that each time. We don't have that time anymore. All that takes more time and more time.
Well, I wanna go on the record that if it did say the beacon in the original motion, which I can't remember, I don't have it written, right? I do not agree, I do not agree with this process that we're being explained. Okay, so I, as part of this board, do not take the responsibility of saying, go ahead, election committee, and do that. I don't think that that's a proper way to do it. Again, I may be a hundred percent wrong. And I don't mind being a hundred percent wrong, but I do not wanna be liable.
That's right.
For following something that may not fit in this instance. It may be another type of situation that's not really explained. If you go to a vendor and the vendor says, well, you know what, I really can't print this for the price I quoted you. Then yeah, you can go to the next vendor. That seems to be, but if the vendor says, you know what, I can do it. I'm working with you. I don't see where we have the right to say, you know what, I don't like you. I don't like the way you work. I, I, I'm gonna go over here. So there's this, this thing and I, and I understand, you know, that, and it's very hard. I mean, particularly in sales, to try to get along with clients. That's what got me, believe me.
Okay, so for the second time, I think the amended motion that, that was put forth is probably the, the way to go at this point.
There's a few things that we need to practice looking at it. There's a few things that are busy.
Okay, without, without going to, you guys do that at committee.
We're fine.
No, that's.
So we have an amendment on the table. It's been seconded? And as we were in, in discussion.
Hugo seconded.
Let's go ahead and take a vote on, on, oh, it wasn't an amendment. I'm sorry. It was a motion to postpone the item to the next meeting.
Correct.
Are we, is there anybody else who has, has been said?
Can you read the complete motion for me, please?
We're just gonna postpone it.
No, we're just postpone. It's ju-, it's just to postpone it to here at the next general board meeting. And in the meantime, they're gonna get some advice from the city attorney. As well as the committee will meet and go over this flyer and see if it meets. as well as the committee will meet and go over this flyer and see if it meets all their requirements and or expectations.
Okay, I haven't had a chance to say something, everybody has had several.
On the amendment, okay?
Yes.
And we still have other items.
The amendment is to table the home.
Yeah, right, so if we table it and as Angela pointed out, that there's corrections to be made on this and tabling it, as the chair for the committee pointed out, this is time sensitive.
That's right.
And the thing is, this has been going along for quite a long, long time. And we're just now getting this, uh, because it's come shelf to push that saying, and it's too little, too late because there's quite a bit has to be done to this still. And it's just gonna throw off the schedule that we had had they cooperated just on this one item. Had they cooperated, uh, that, uh, newspaper, uh, would have had their money and all, and we wouldn't be talking about it now. But I think they failed on this particular issue only, on the rest, they might have complied, but they did this and that to me, nullifies the verbal agreements that they made.
Okay, so you're for the postponement? Uh, I don't know what to, let's, let's take one last comment.
I'm for the postponement, but this is still a work in process because this has already been voted upon.
Okay, we're not even discussing the flyer right now.
Right, so.
Let's not discuss the flyer.
It's, it's apples and oranges, the postponement had nothing to do with following through on the work on this.
Okay, are we, we're prepared to take a vote?
Yes.
Okay. We're ta, we're voting on whether or not to postpone item ten to the next general board meeting, pending some clarification from the city attorney and the review of the flyer by the elections committee. All in favor of postponing this item, raise your hand.
Because it's a finding item, doesn't it have to go by?
Um, well, we're not voting on funding, we're voting on postponing.
I postpone it.
Alright, fine.
Shall we take a roll call vote just to be sure?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Michelle.
Hugo Pacheco?
Yes.
Tom Williams?
No.
Cynthia Sandoval?
To postpone?
Correct. Manuel Chacon?
No.
Troy Carverholm?
Yes.
Anthony Manzano?
No.
Scott Johnson?
Abstain. Pending at the string.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Michelle Corzantes, yes, Ruben Chavez?
Yes.
Angela Duarte?
Yes.
Margine Fonseca?
Abstain.
Seven?
Three.
Three? Seven, three, two.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to item eleven, discussion on possible action.
The numbers, the numbers, what was it?
Uh, seven, three, two. That LA thirty-two neighborhood council canceled the approved April seven twenty sixteen meet and greet. Candidates event. Are you guys ready? With the two hundred dollars for light refreshment and instead approve an election outreach at the annual honor your park day to be held at El Cerrino Royal Playground on March nineteenth twenty sixteen, and approve funding up to two hundred dollars for refreshments, snacks, candy and children's prizes.
Come on with.
So basically that, it's same, same funding as that was already approved, we're just changing the date and location.
Well, that's the motion, I, I moved the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Any public comment on this?
Number eleven.
Board comment?
Uh, just like to know what the advantages are or the reasons, I mean.
What was the April seven, Viva, originally?
April seven was gonna be a meet and greet, but because Val Marcus came forth with the vecinos, El Cerrino vecinos, he would like us to co-sponsor. Uh, yes, the flyer went out, but I'm pretty sure once we give him the good news, if the board approves, he will put something together for us, uh, with some flyers printed with our logo on there. Um, and they need, they need support with either gifts for the little prizes that they're gonna have, water bottles, chips, snacks. And, um, instead of doing the meet and greet on April seven, we would do our outreach that day for election, kinda co-sponsor with them.
So it's not a meet and greet, it's not for the candidates, cause they're obviously.
Yeah, there's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be an election.
It's just gonna be, it's just gonna be election outreach.
Election outreach and we are not asking for additional funds because that amount that was approved for April seven is just pretty much gonna be used for March nineteen.
So now there will only be two candidate meet and greets?
Correct.
I'm sorry, but any other, is there board discussion on this, questions or concerns? Okay, let's go ahead and take a vote. Um, again, the motion is that LA thirty-two NC canceled the approved April seven twenty sixteen meet and greet candidates event with the two hundred dollars for light refreshments and instead approve an election outreach at the annual honor your park day to be held at El Cerrino Royal Playground on March nineteenth twenty sixteen, and approve funding up to two hundred dollars for refreshments, snacks, candy and children's prizes. All in favor of this motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, it's up, yeah.
Hugo Pacheco?
Yes.
Tom Williams?
No.
Cynthia Sandoval? Manuel Chacon?
Yes.
Troy Carverholm?
Yes.
Anthony Manzano?
Yes.
Scott Johnson?
Abstain.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Michelle Corzantes, yes, Ruben Chavez?
Yes.
Angela Duarte?
Yes.
Margine Fonseca?
Yes.
Ten, one, one, motion passes.
Um, Cynthia just pointed something out that, right, he, he hasn't done his ethics training, so he's ineligible, even though he's abstaining, can you mark him as ineligible?
Yes, I will do that.
On, on all of the.
This is right.
Okay, I will take care of it.
Thank you. Items will have discussion and possible action, motion that LA thirty-two NC real allocates one thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars from the twenty fifteen sixteen budget. The amount of four seventy-nine will be allocated to election committee and one thousand two hundred and forty will be allocated to arts and culture committee. Came out of budget and finance and. There's a draft.
I move the motion.
Thank you.
You can second.
Good.
Second by who?
I did.
Cynthia, okay.
Is there public comment on this?
I'm just curious how much is the budget for elections? The total budget.
Total budget for elections? Um, it looks like twelve thousand six eighty-eight thirty-nine, was that your full budget for election committee, Michelle?
I thought it was fifteen thousand.
We added, uh, we added the, uh, we added more.
Oh, I'm, I'm. Okay, you're right, I'm sorry, fifteen thousand twenty-eight, is that including the four seventy-nine, this fifteen thousand you have here?
No.
So about fifteen thousand five hundred? Yeah? Minus a dollar, give or take a dollar. Any other public comment? Board comment? Hugo?
Yeah, you can help me with these numbers a little bit here. So we're gonna take seventeen nineteen from our budget, four seventy-nine to be allocated to the election committee and twelve forty-two be allocated to the cultural committee. Uh, and then the review meeting, maybe that's what I need to know, why are we doing this? I mean, that's, I don't know, why are we doing this? And the other thing is, can we afford it, I mean, is this, you know, I mean, not that we're overestimating the budget itself here, and it'd be possible.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, I will answer your questions back then.
Michelle? Um, I hope you guys are both looking at the bullet copy, the draft, and then, I mean, I know, I know, we, we made copies, uh, the last time color and then this time there were, every time I made copies, it gets like, the, the resolution gets less and less. Uh, we took the money from ad hoc senior because the, uh, the original motion was that if a commi, a committee does not use the money, the funds by February, I think we said February nineteen or twelve, uh, it would go towards be able to be used for another committee after your election, is what it was, and we voted on that as a board, that we would agree to it if that committee. So that's why Public Safety quickly made their motion and they already locked in their thousand for their events and their line items and everything that they already gave us. Uh, ad hoc senior didn't bring that forth, so that is why Budget and Finance made that recommendation, that allocation from there. And then the rest of the money came from, uh, Operation One Hundred Facility, uh, which was narrowing down exactly what we need from here to June thirty-first. And that's exactly what we need from here to June thirty-first, three thousand one hundred seventy-one, and we spent two thousand four hundred thirty-seven. So there's seven hundred and thirty-five left that, um, that we need from here to that day.
That's just to cover the general board meetings?
Yeah, yeah. So, so that is why that amount came to what it is and, uh, why is election gonna take four hundred, uh, what is it, we said?
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred.
Yeah. Um, and the rest, one thousand four hundred, two thousand four, one thousand two hundred forty for arts and culture because we know that they need it, obviously. So we would be using it towards, um, the brochure or the postcard. Whatever we can get for that amount.
Thank you.
Ruben?
No comment.
Uh, Jennifer?
No.
Anthony? Cynthia? Troy? Tom?
Bottom Elizabeth.
Scott?
Um, as the former chair of the Line News Committee, do you have any money set aside for your committee for anything?
No.
One of the thoughts I had was, uh, doing, it's one of the meetings, doing a town hall on election lines. Right, mhm, but, uh.
He likes some money in your.
You know money, like you said. Okay.
He's like some, uh.
Next, next.
Michael's in term, but he's, he can drive it to us.
Okay. Alright.
Um, did you check, was it check on?
Yes.
Is there any other board comment, is there any clarification? No, you answered all people's questions, right? If you wanted to know why and can we afford it? I think you answered those.
Yeah, did you want to amend right now, this is the time Cynthia for me? This is the time to do it right now at this point. I know you gave me a price and if you like, we can go for this right now.
Where can we put it, on this, on this?
Instead of, uh, we can either take it from the four seventy-nine from election or one thousand two hundred forty from arts and culture, whichever one, we'll go less.
How much is the ink, okay, let me go back and I'll tell you.
She, she got the price.
Because we're, we're probably not gonna do the outreach items, just because of time. And that was something we didn't need anyway. We was just, well, it was there.
It was a part of the actual line item, it was, uh, an extra.
But, but we do need a little extra for the printing, cause the, the actual invoice came out about a hundred dollars more than the quote.
Right.
So then we'll take it from the.
Well, I'd say how much it is.
Okay. I think she said, I don't know, I don't even remember.
I'll get it for you, it's right here.
I can almost guarantee though that we're gonna have a few hundred left.
And this is gonna be only for two printers, which will be the treasurer's printer and the, the corresponding, uh, printer.
So the printer, let me clarify, the printer that Michelle has, we would be getting nine cartridges for about eighty dollars.
Wow, that's pretty good.
Nine cartridges?
Nine cartridges, would be three color, uh, three blue, three magenta, three whatever, whatever, and then it would be two black.
Okay.
So in total would be nine cartridges for eighty dollars. Now, the one that I use, that ink is nine cartridges for fifty-eight dollars. So you get two, two, two and three or something like that, I can't remember, I, I look it up, I have it on my, um, I saved it on a picture. And, um.
So we have a hundred.
They're XL sizes, they're not just regular sizes, they're XL sizes, so you get more ink for the money. Now, I can go back into my, uh, snapshot.
So that's eighty and fifty, you said fifty-six, right?
Mm-hmm, so it's about that, so it's like a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty dollars.
Forty, which, yeah.
I don't know that you can.
It's an online company.
Yeah, we've done it before to this motion because it's like completely different and you don't go through.
Well, we just make an amend.
Oh, but if, I, then you know why, because it's not listed.
It's changing the mo, it's something that was our.
It's changing the action.
I think, I think we're maybe better off, like I was saying, I, I mean, we can pretty much guarantee that we, we're gonna have a few hundred to give back, and we can do that at the executive committee meeting. Just reallocate from the arts and culture.
But we're shorting now though, the printer doesn't have anymore.
Yeah, we're shorting.
Oh, you would have to, but you'd buy it now?
Yeah, cause I don't have, I don't have any.
It doesn't have any.
Don't have any. Well, I, I'm not, I'm sorry, let me clarify that, I do have color, but I do not have black.
Okay.
But you need black to print.
And the machine will not work if the black cartridge is not in the machine.
Okay, so how much do you need?
A hundred and sixty to cover with taxes and everything.
Right.
If they're all both, uh, printers.
So it'll take twelve forty minus one sixty?
So we'll leave the operations, leave them in dock and operations, so you don't touch it, it's not.
That would be one thousand eighty.
Fifty thousand.
Yeah, ten eighty.
It would go back to the operations then.
So just change the amount, let, let's just change the amount on the arts and culture to ten eighty and leave that, leave it in, leave that other amount in operation.
So that would be changed to ten eighty, okay.
To do, I'm gonna make the amend.
Yes, please.
I'd like to amend that the LA thirty-two real allocates one thousand seven hundred nineteen from the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen budget. The amount of four seventy-nine will be allocated to election committee, the amount of one thousand eighty dollars to the arts and culture committee and one hundred and sixty to operational expense.
Move it.
Uh, don't add operation.
You're just gonna.
We just back to the general fund now?
I'm sorry, no, 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 we would move it to office equipment and supplies. Cause there is a category that says office equipment and supplies.
So you have the category. Yeah.
Yeah.
I move it, I move it, move.
Do you have to, you guys part in motion?
No, cause that was on her ta, on her budget reallocation.
Yeah, so you don't have to put it on the motion, so just put the.
Yeah, you're just, on the motion, you're just changing twelve forty to ten eighty.
Can you read the motion then?
Because in your motion.
Oh, I see what you're saying, we're just changing the amount and that sits there. It sits on, uh, on operation, we don't even have to worry about voting it publicly and the bu, board didn't, uh, the public didn't get a chance to vote on it, yes or no, we're just pretty much going less on the amount.
Yeah, right, and the rest just stays.
It covers us, okay.
I'll second that motion.
Do you want me, do you want me to repeat it?
No.
It's an amendment and it's just striking out twelve forty and replacing it with ten eighty.
Yeah.
So is it, was it a motion?
Yes, I just did, just go through the last part.
Amendment.
I moved it and she seconded it.
No.
Michelle made the amendment, you seconded it.
Well, I seconded it, I beat her.
And so the amendment is that LA thirty-two NC real allocate seventeen, oh, that, that amount changes as well.
I'm speeding it up.
Yeah, so seven, yeah, that'll be.
Seventeen nineteen minus one sixty.
What was the number again?
Fifteen fifty-nine.
Seventeen.
Fifteen fifty-nine?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the amendment, okay?
I'm writing down, amendment proposed to reallocate.
Fifteen fifty-nine.
Fifteen fifty-nine, no, no sense?
No.
No.
Okay, two.
From the, the rest stays the same from the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen budget. Amount of four seventy-nine allocated to election committee and ten eighty will be allocated to arts and culture committee.
So I, I don't get it then, amendment proposed to reallocate fifteen fifty-nine to.
The, go from the.
Are you looking at the original motion?
Two thousand fifteen to two thousand six hundred.
Oh, it's over here.
We're striking out that, replacing that fifteen fifty-nine. And striking that twenty.
Okay, so we're actually going from one seventeen nineteen to one five five nine.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the one, seventeen nineteen.
Two one five five nine.
You're gonna get it all over there.
And then twelve forty.
Yes, I gave him the application.
And, and twelve forty to twelve eighty?
Ten eighty.
Okay, twelve.
Is there any, any board comment on the amendment?
I'll watch.
Let's, let's vote on. Let's vote on the amendment. All in favor of amending the motion, raise your hand? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Abstaining, ten zero one, wait. Did you vote?
It is a fin, it is a finance motion.
Yes.
Okay, then I have to abstain.
Ineligible, that's right.
Right.
So nine, zero, one, one, one ineligible.
Yeah.
Nine, zero.
Zero, okay.
One, one.
And that's just on the amendment, so now let's vote on the actual amendment. So the motion is that LA thirty-two NC real allocates one thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars from the twenty fifteen sixteen budget. The amount of four seventy-nine will be allocated to elections committee and one thousand eighty will be allocated to arts and culture committee. Just through UN Hugo, we deducted, reduced the amount to cover some ink for Cynthia's printer that she's completely out of.
The bold printer, and the printer I have to.
And then I can't donate, I know it's, I, I donate to.
Is there any public comment on that motion?
No, I'll second it.
You can donate to my personal printer and I'll print out the agenda.
Let's go ahead and take a vote on the motion, all in favor of this motion?
It's a roll call.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Hugo Pacheco? Tom Williams?
No.
Cynthia Sandoval?
Yes.
Manuel Chacon?
Absent.
Absent.
Abstain.
Troy Carverholm?
Yes.
Anthony Manzano?
Yes.
Scott Johnson?
Abstain. Ineligible.
Jennifer Markovich?
Yes.
Michelle Corzantes, yes, Ruben Chavez? Angela Duarte? Margine Fonseca?
Yes.
One, one, motion passes.
Eight, one, one.
Motion passes.
I'm starting.
Eight, one, one. Eight, one.
Eight, one, 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 one.
Eight, one, one, huh, yeah.
One, one. And since it's under twenty-five hundred, uh, I can reduce the ink already to the air tomorrow, so send me the name of the business.
Okay, so.
I will.
Okay, item thirteen. Okay, la, um, item thirteen is discussion. Okay, la, um, item thirteen is discussion impossible action. That LA thirty-two NC approve the use of twelve forty and one cent for the sixth annual kite festival for the following items. Two hundred and ninety-four for Charlie's printing, this is to increase the number of flyers to twenty-five hundred and to change the print to color. Also to include two three-by-eight banners, which we didn't have before, the, and the other was gonna be in black and white. Um, we, we need up to five hundred dollars for picnic time entertainment in the form of a, a live band, we're looking at a jazz band right now. Up to four forty-six for giveaway outreach items.
I move the motion.
No, I'm...
No, hold on.
Can't make a motion to amend. I second it.
So we're trying to be a bounce, right?
Right, so the amount is now gonna read ten eighty, total. Um, two ninety-four for Charlie's printing is gonna remain the same, right? Yeah. Um, the, the band is gonna remain the same, it may be a little cheaper, but we're gonna leave it up to, it'll probably be more, about four hundred. Um, we need a hundred dollars more for US trophies.
Yes.
To cover the medals, the original quote they gave us was eleven hundred, um, now they're, it's eleven ninety-nine. And they, they actually reduced the amount to two dollars and twenty cents a medal, in order to accommodate it. Um, so, and then the, the, those giveaway outreach items where, we're not gonna, we don't have time to go. So, that was just extra money, and we figured we could do, do that.
So, not, instead of it being outreach items, what are you gonna replace it with? Are you gonna strike it?
Yeah, you know what, can we, can we strike the four forty-six and put...
Should we do it?
Okay, we're just gonna strike it altogether. Since you're amending the motion, can you just put the date as part of the motion? Oh, okay. On, on April twenty-fourth. So let me read you the amendment.
Um, I wanna know who's the maker of the motion first, because the way we're supposed to be, you have to have a motion on the board before anything can be amended.
I moved the motion.
The motion was moved.
You.
Should he's catching it?
She seconded it.
I seconded it.
She sure did.
So the amendment reads that LA thirty-two NC approve the use of one thousand eighty dollars for the sixth annual kite festival on April twenty-fourth, twenty sixteen, for the following items. Two hundred and ninety-four for Charlie's printing, up to five hundred dollars for, uh, picnic entertainment, and one hundred dollars for US trophies and awards for medals. Is there any public comment on this amendment?
Is there a second amendment?
Yes.
Yes, Angela.
Should I amend the amendment? Board comment on the amendment? Hugo?
So the trophies are, are, are for the best kite flyer, is that what it is?
Trophies are, are for the participants.
They're not trophies.
It's a participant trophy.
They're medals.
It's not a, you want first, you want second, you want third, it's a participant medal slash trophy. Call it what you will, but that's what it's for.
So you stay, stay, I mean, the one I attended was...
Attendance equals a medal.
It's a medallion.
Right.
Okay, yeah, because in the past, we had like T-shirt, right, so this, in this...
This replaces that.
Okay.
No, it doesn't replace that.
Well, the T-shirt, we don't have any T-shirts.
We never had T-shirts.
Yes, we did.
Well, maybe you guys did. Last year, the, only the volunteers...
Jim Bolden, Bolden put it together, we got, I got a shirt.
Last year, on...
We did shirts last year?
Last year, only the shirts, and, I mean, only the volunteers, and only volunteers got T-shirts. But everybody who participates, children, get a medal, a kite festival medal.
Oh, no, I'm saying that the first year, they probably got one, so I, I remember that. The one Jim Bolden first put together, yeah.
Okay, well, at some point, medals started coming into play. We kind of had an issue with the medal, we don't think that, I mean, why does, why do you want a medal for playing kite? But, last year, when we were giving them out, everybody was like, oh, I have all, every year's medal, I need this one, so we figured we're not gonna...
I'd like to joke, I'd like to joke.
We're not breaking the tradition, Michelle.
But instead of a medal, can it get on the table?
I, I know that, uh, I know last year when we submitted, uh, the event form and the line item, and they see medals, they did ask me... Is, what is the purpose of the medal? Is it like, uh, the number, is it place, like first place, second place? Because if so, then no medals will be given out. But because every single child will get a medal, they said, okay, if every single child that flies a kite gets a medal, then they said, it's okay.
Well, yeah, there's five hundred kites, and there's five hundred medals, and it's festival flying on the fly.
Yes.
Five hundred kites, five hundred medals.
How much are the medals?
Two dollars.
Last year, they paid two seventy-five this year.
We paid two seventy-five.
And how much are the kites?
This year, we got less, we got five hundred, and he gave us, uh, two twenty each medal.
But it really encourages participation. A lot of the kids go with the medal, they get really happy.
And we gotta go pick up, uh, five hundred kites, and shove them in.
So what if I bring my own kite, I don't get a medal?
You get one.
If you show up, you get a medal.
Is there a co, board comment on the amendment?
I think City fourteen already got the kites, they're the ones doing the kites, no?
Yeah, we picked them up.
Oh, that's a, cheapie, the one dollar?
No, they're actually, no, they're actually the nice ones, they get really nice ones.
Originally, they asked us to drive to San Diego to pick them up. To help them save four hundred dollars in shipping costs, but then, um, they were able to get them to Mar-a-Loma, Mar-a-Loma, is that where? So we picked them up.
Constabulary shipping on the kite.
Yeah.
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 I think so, that's what I was trying to figure out, but I just...
Okay, so the kite are there already. Let's vote on the amend, on whether or not to amend the motion, and this is just to amend, not on the actual motion. All in favor of amending the motion?
I'm gonna ask Hugo.
Uh, no, it's to amend.
No, it's just the amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry, not the actual motion.
Just to amend.
Maran? Are you abstaining or opposed?
Uh, abstaining.
Tom?
No.
Okay, okay. So nine, nine, one?
You can have the, the T-shirt.
Nine, one, one.
Wait, no, there's gotta be four. Because he's inalatable, it's a different category.
It's not for funding. It's not for funding, it's an amendment.
Oh, the amendment.
And he abstained, all right.
Yeah, I abstained, it's still funding, so...
Okay, so now let's vote on the actual motion. That LA thirty-two approved the use of one thousand eighty dollars for the sixth annual kite festival on April twenty-fourth, twenty sixteen, for the following items. Two hundred and ninety-four for Charlie's printing, up to five hundred for picnic entertainment and live jazz bands, one hundred dollars for US trophies and awards for medals. Is there any public comment on the motion? Board comment?
I want a medal.
You want another first five hundred? Uh, Tom?
Uh, my basic issue with this, the kite festival. Having it on Ascot Hill is, or El Serena, probably just about the worst place to put it. Because half of the hill has no residences at all.
Residences.
And as people. It is a, quotes, a Griffith Park-style park, it's a regional park. It really, if you held it down at El Serena Rec Center, or maybe over on Elephant Hill, it would be within the community. And my biggest issue with Ascot as a park is that it doesn't, doesn't work within the community. It's so remote, and you have to drive to it virtually. So, it promotes the very worst things in recreation. Guardia Park, hey, it's right there, down amongst everybody, doesn't have much wind. But might say, it's, for me, it's outside the community, and it's a lot of money for something that, does anyone else co-sponsor it? Who?
Councilman.
Who?
Councilman.
Other than the council?
Well, the organizations are providing arts and crafts for the kids.
The county also, uh, last year.
I have the floor.
Well, take it then.
Well, it used to be Gloria, Minnie, Molina, but now it's all the Solis. It used to be Gloria, Molina. She, what he's asking, has anybody ever sponsored it, other than us?
A couple times, yeah, I think one year, the mayor sponsored it.
And that suggests to me that it's eh, remote. And might say, the amount of money and the remoteness of the location. If it was down on Elephant Hill, or one of the other hills that we have, even if there wasn't as much space, it would be within the community. The neighbors would say, oh, they're having the kite plane.
Well, Hillside Village is part of, Hillside Village is part of our community, and it is within the community, it's within our boundaries.
It's on all of our agendas.
And the dash goes right by it.
What's downhill of the ridgeline?
And the, what do you mean what's downhill?
From Ascot Hill. Going down. You, you're going to be up on the ridgeline? You gotta have wind.
You're up in the hills, there's like six of them.
Okay, but, uh, all I'm saying is, it's a remote park to the rest of the community. I'd prefer to see a kite flying down at El Serena Recreation Center, or Guardia, or any Elephant Hill, even on, uh, coming to drive.
Understood, but then the people from Hillside Village could argue the same thing you're saying, it's remote from them, they have to drive there.
And, might say...
We have events all over.
Yeah, I, that's, that's not quite true all over, but anyway.
We've had Guardia, we've had El Serena, we've had Rose Hill, we haven't had Ascot. But anyway, point taken, thank you. Hugo?
Historically, he's right, and I'll tell you why, because a year ago, so it's playing that part, I, I was involved in that part way back when I was a corporate.
Yeah.
With Snyder. And the whole idea of that part was to keep it for that community. And that was the way Villa Rosa sold it, that there would not be all the other people from El Serena going into the prestige, and I used to live in Hillside Village, so, again, the prestigious Hillside Village would not be, you know, uh, uh, with all the number of other kind of people down there. And, and so, in a way, he's right. When it comes to outreach, we might wanna do it next year to go to a location that serves the community better. Because that is, it was sold kind of as a private park for Hillside Village, and that's, that is true.
Thousands of people showed up last time, it's a great park, and you have wind, and you need hills to be able to fly a kite.
You need wind.
Wind, well, hopefully that day is windy, can we vote?
Yes. Scott?
But I think Hugo does bring up a point, is that the next, the next incarnation is board, because Elephant Hill since the city had purchased that property, I mean, it'd be nice to start getting some organized activities over there, because we're actually now, it's beginning, starting to get issues regarding other activities that the community doesn't want. Vehicle driving up and down the hill, things like that. But still, I, I think, uh, you know, for a point now, is, this has been a location started, but I think in the future, yeah, rotate it.
Okay, thank you. Ruben, really quickly, please.
Yes. I think that Hugo and Doctor, and even, uh, Mr. Johnson are also a hundred percent correct. We could start wherever they want, but there's no reason why we should end that one, we should continue that for years and years. Now, we have picnic tables there, roads and that, the Elephant Hill, whatever it was, uh, that the city just bought not too long ago, that has to be developed into something, so the public can do the parking lot, picnic tables, and all that, that we already have here. And it's a community that does go, it may be out of the community, but they say it is, but the community people come there. Okay, you should come, this flying thing, you should come to this thing yourself, so you, you see the success that there is. I have no problem starting something elsewhere at a different time, but this event needs to continue there forever.
Okay, let's take a roll call, vote on item thirteen.
Hugo Pacheco?
Yes.
Tom Williams?
No.
Cynthia Sandoval?
Yes.
Manuel Checon, absent. Troy Carvahal? Anthony Manzano?
Yes.
Scott Johnson, inaltable?
Doesn't spirit.
Jen, Jennifer Markovich?
Yes.
Michelle Corantes, yes. Ruben Chavez? Angela Duarte?
Yes.
Marlin Fonseca?
Yes.
Nine, one, zero, three, one.
Nine, one, zero, one.
Oh, it's because I'm giving you the count of the, of the absent and the inaltable. Okay, let me just give you the, the yes, no, and abstain, nine, one, zero. And if you want the absent, three absents and one inaltable.
Oh, okay, I can figure out what the three is.
Nine, one, zero.
Nine, one, zero.
Getting technical.
Thanks, you guys. Okay, item fourteen, discussion impossible action, motion that LA thirty-two NC hear the presentation from the US Census Bureau, who's not here, and that LA thirty-two NC support and publicize the twenty sixteen census pilot program. They came to our executive meeting. They're gonna be doing a pilot program on the census, which instead of receiving mailers, the things you fill out in the mail normally, you're gonna get a, they're gonna get a mailer that, um, directs them to go online and complete the census. If after about, I think he said after two weeks, depending on the number of responses they get, they, they'll have a second mailing out of these reminder mailers to go back online. If that doesn't work, then they're gonna send them the, the physical form like always. It's a pilot program, our, our area is one of the chosen that's gonna be affected by it, or it's gonna be tested on. All they're asking of us is that we advertise it, put it on as much of our social media as we can, try to get the word out, put flyers at their meetings, what happened?
No money, right? No money, go.
No money?
No.
Well, have them come maybe and do a five-minute thing to, for our stakeholders at the next meeting.
But they also wanted us to invite them to events, so that they bring their computers.
Oh, yeah, they wanna be able to come to events and bring their computers, and you could fill out the census there, so they'll be, they wanna come to the kite fest, things like that, so. Uh, pretty much, we just be allowing them to come in and, and do their pilot programs at our events, as well as us having kite.
That's good.
So they give us a report afterwards? Yeah, the census is available to everybody.
As far as the pilot program, no, you mean a report on how the pilot, how the pilot program?
Report it marked out, I'm sure they will, they will actually, I'm just curious.
That might take time to compute all that information.
What we're doing is trying to do a dry run
Right.
for the twenty twenty census.
Yes.
This one is just, might say, really a sampling to see if online works.
Works, right.
We are going to be somewhat the same thing on elections, online elections, see if it works.
Uh, you know what, we didn't, we didn't move the motion, I was kind of just trying to explain, you wanna move?
I'll second it.
Is there any public comment on this? Board comment?
What if I'm not here legally?
Oh, it's no problem.